All right, we will call the meeting to order. You guys can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, as we catch our bearings here and get started, thank you to Chinook for that wonderful performance. We do appreciate it. And we will get started with special recognition, Music in Our Schools Month, Dr. Pierce.
Okay, well, we all just had the pleasure of hearing from the Chinook Wolf Pack 8th Grade Orchestra, who played before the meeting this evening for Music in Our Schools Month. And next meeting on March 27th, Mike and Scarlet and Gold Choir will be here to sing three songs before the meeting. So we again thank teacher Terry Glassford in her class for performing tonight, and we look forward to next week's or next board meeting's performance as well. The other recognition we have this evening, and I just want to make sure this microphone is being a little funny. Are you able to hear, if you're in the audience, can you hear me okay? So, so?
You're gonna have to yell.
Okay. I'll see, in the meantime, I'll yell and then we'll see if we can get this fixed a little bit. What's that? Well, we have other reports, though. But thank you, okay. So we are celebrating Education Support Professionals Month, and this week we pay close attention to it here in our school district. We get to deliver cakes out to the different schools and sites. And this is the meeting where we read the Governor's Proclamation, and we also have a little slideshow to share with the board tonight. So that is not the slideshow. But I want to start with the Governor's Proclamation and read that. And it states, whereas education support professionals are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classroom, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to special education students, English language learners and opportunity gap students, performing and conducting research activities, providing information, technology and media services, administrative support functions and safe transportation, creating a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services. And whereas more than 62,000 education support professionals work with and help students at Washington's universities, colleges, and public schools are the backbone of our public education system and deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state. And whereas education support professionals are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students, and by supporting the learning environment, they serve as crucial partners with teachers, parents, administrators, and school boards, now therefore I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Education Support Professionals Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. So we would like to give a special recognition to our education support professionals here in KSD. And now is where I want to share with you a little slideshow that was put together by our Communications Department. When are you gonna play? Let's see here. I'm gonna try and hopefully it plays. Robin, do you have any advice here? It played in my office, but it's not playing here. We have a really great team here in KSD, and we're really proud. So we just want to give a big round of applause. We have a really great team here in KSD, and we're really proud. So we just want to give a big round of applause. We have a really great team here in KSD, and we're really proud. So we just want to give a big round of applause. We have a really great team here in KSD, and we're really proud. So we just want to give a big round of applause. We have a really great team here in KSD, and we're really proud. So we just want to give a big round of applause.
All right, moving on. Next up is Communication from Parents, Staff, and District Residents. Tracy's grabbing the... Thank you. The Kennewick School Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors sets aside 30 minutes for communication from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided, as it's the goal to listen and to learn. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. It is important for all community members to feel welcome and safe during these board business meetings. The board does not take public comments on issues related to personnel or individually named staff members at board meetings. However, you can email the board with any such comments. Finally, please remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of the legal effects of your remarks, you should seek independent legal counsel. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sound likes. Guidelines for addressing the board. You've already used the form to sign in. The board president will call your name. Please come to the podium at the front of the room. You will have two minutes to address the board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have one minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. First up, Dottie Stevens.
Thank you. I'm Dottie Stevens. I'm a Kennewick resident, and I'm a KSD partner. I'm speaking to student voice, and I hope this has been fixed. I was concerned when I heard Mallory Duque Quay, student board representative from Kennewick High School, said she could not do her job due to the special surprise board meeting and board resolution on February 20th. She had no hours to consult with her constituents about the 9:00 AM meeting focusing on Senate Bill 5462 promoting inclusive learning standards and instructional materials in public schools, and House Bill 2331 modifying requirements for public instructional and supplemental instructional materials. Mallory, however, was able to express her opinions and concerns in opposition to the resolution and view that her student constituents favored an inclusory approach to learning standards and instructional materials. I appreciate that Mallory was able to attend and express her views. My experience at Kennewick High School for a decade informed me that exemplary students like Mallory helped shape improvements in curriculum and future career choices. Senior class president earning an AA while in high school tennis player, competitive DECA student, wow, so fortunate to have her. Open questions for the board. We have been talking about local control, and it doesn't get more local than Mallory or real. Here is our student who we are serving and concerned about. Why the rush to judgment with unintended consequences that exclude our constituents? Does this impact trust in our schools and perhaps potential candidates for our leadership positions? Thank you.
Thank you. Dottie? No, no problem. I think Amy Payson, right, is next? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy. I'm a counselor at Kennewick High School. And I am going to just read because I, you know, give me a microphone and an auditorium full of students, and I'm fine, but it's different adults. About a month ago, I sat here and watched you guys talk about the job of high school counselors. You expressed concern that we weren't focusing enough on academics in college. So you can imagine our surprise when we found out that the district was terminating our contract with comprehensive and eliminating the mental health supports that we have in our buildings. I'm not sure if any of you have tried to find mental health care in our community, especially for kids. It's not easy. It took me months to get my own daughter into counseling, and then when her counselor left the agency we were already established with, we had to sit on a waitlist for another eight weeks for another provider. To be available. How's that? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you online.
As of June 30th, if the district goes through with this cut, we will have approximately 300 teenagers trying to find new providers, many of them uninsured. In addition, many of these kids access our in-building services because they don't have the ability to travel in the community during the hours that providers are available because of sports, jobs, parents' ability to miss work, and even the cost of gas. These are our kids that need the care the most. Having our therapist onsite allows us as school counselors to focus on the other things like academic success while being assured that the kids that need the help get it. It's devastating to think of the ramifications of this cut. The district keeps saying that this program was always meant to be temporary. If that is the case, why are they, why were they trying to hire a new therapist at one of the middle schools just a month ago? If this is the case, why did the RFP from last year clearly state that there is an option for renewal by the district? If it was always meant to be temporary, why do those things exist? We all understand budgets. We understand that the ESAR funding was temporary. We understand buckets of money. We understand that you added an additional counselor at each high school. I still have a caseload of 413. We aren't asking for the why. We're asking that you find another bucket, find the funding to pay for this valuable service, and show the students in this district that they are really safe, known, and valued.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Diane Sundick.
Board members, lovely to be on this side and to tell you what I really think. Not that I didn't before. So the Healthy Youth Survey, I know that there are some of you who are not in favor of that, and you've spoken very clearly about that. I want to tell you what the Healthy Youth Survey told us today when it came out. And let me find the right spot. For those of you who want to see it for yourself, you can visit askhys.net to access all the data on the dashboard. So the Healthy Youth Survey tells us that 217,000 Washington students from 6th to 12th grade took that survey this year. This is a small snippet of what they said. "Mental health outcomes among 10th graders are improving. That remain highly concerning, especially for youth who face more barriers to mental health support." And I think Amy spoke to that very clearly. "According to the new data, depressive feelings and contemplation or planning of suicide significantly decreased from 2021 to 2023." Even so, 30%, get that, 30%, and you can check how many 10th graders. I didn't have time to check. That's a whole lot of 10th graders, reported persistent depressive feelings, and nearly 15% reported contemplating suicide. That breaks my heart. Depressive feelings were nearly two times higher for students who identify as female as for those who identify as male, more than two times higher for LGBTQIA+ youth, and three times higher among students identified as having a disability. Michael Langer, who's the Assistant Director of the Washington State Health Care Authority, said, "It is important to maintain focus on adolescent substance abuse and mental health while also using prevention strategies to address other challenges facing young people." That's what our mental health counselors are doing. He also discussed this included disordered eating and violence that our students receive in our schools, in our district, every day. I would like to encourage you to find the $1.1 million, or it may be more this year, to restore those therapists. At least, you could look at our districts in our neighborhood and see what they're doing with Hazel Health. I would prefer to have onsite people, but Hazel Health is less expensive. It certainly is not as good, but I would at least ask you to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Next up, Mary Jo Wilkins.
I spoke to you a couple weeks ago. I'm a Kennewick resident, former school nurse in the district, and I'm here to talk about the mental health services. You hired staff to identify patients at risk, and we just started serving them. So by just withdrawing that help from them is tantamount to patient abandonment. Where will these children go? Amy spoke to us succinctly about the lack of mental health providers in the community, kids can't get out of school to get therapy. There's just so many contradictions. And as Diane said, the other two districts are not cutting their programs, even though it's not in-person therapy. At least, the kids still have a safety net. We would not consider removing nurses so the diabetics couldn't come to school anymore. We wouldn't consider removing educational counselors so the kids couldn't graduate on time. There are no other staff in the buildings that can take up this critical role for kids with this high suicide rate that they have currently. So I beg you, as a taxpayer and a mother of three children, grown children, we need to meet their mental health needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. And next up is Rachel LaBelle.
My name is Rachel LaBelle, and I am a employee of ESD 123. I currently reside at Legacy High School. I started at Legacy High School this year in September. September 14th was my first day as these kids para, and I was not even prepared for what happened to me. I fell in love so hard and so fast for these kids. And the moment that I heard that they, there might even be a possibility that mental health services were going to be cut from the school, from any school, I just didn't know what I, what I was gonna do, but I knew I was gonna make sure that I fought for every single one of these kids, not just my kids in KSD or at Legacy, but all of the kids in KSD. As a mom of a daughter who goes to school at Highlands, who has attempted suicide three times in this school year, she has been looking toward Alma for that mental health service. As someone who worked school hours, and I'm trying really hard at the after-school program, while I was para, I worked 11-hour days, para after school in 21st Century, I couldn't get my daughter to counseling unless I took that time off from work. I can't afford that. I can't pay my bills on a para wage, even with two hours at the end of the day with 21st Century. I cannot afford to take my daughter out of school, because if we do, we don't eat. Okay? So now I'm sitting here with these kids, these kids from Legacy. These kids are so special and so unique, not more so than others. But if you, I challenge you all, spend a month with me, spend a month with the kids from Legacy High, and tell me that you are ready to pull services. Because you won't. I guarantee it, you will not. Go to Highlands. Those kids need the mental health services there. Parents don't, not all parents care, not all parents have the well-worked to know that, hey, my kid needs help. Some people can't trust their parents. These kids have that person at the school for those reasons. Do not let them fall through the cracks. So many kids will not come to school, and out of the words of the students, will die.
Thank you, Rachel. Do we have anybody? Nobody online? All right. That ends that section of the meeting. Moving on to consent items. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Patty, will you call for the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Quethill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galvin?
Yes. All right. Next up is Communications Follow-Up. Dr. Pierce, do you have anything tonight?
I am thinking, I do not have any Communications Follow-Up from the last board meeting.
Okay.
Tonight, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Next up is Superintendent and Board Member Reports. Dr. Pierce, would you like to start? Should we?
Well, I just wanted to check, Mallory was here today for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We had the focus group today. So I'm not sure, I hope she's okay. I haven't heard from her, but I'm assuming Mallory will be joining us. But anyway, I'll go ahead and, I'm not going to give the report about the Advisory Council Focus Group, because I think Mallory will want to do that when she's here, if not tonight, next time. So a couple of things I wanted to share, just, you know, good, good news things over the past couple of weeks since the last board meeting. I've had great visits to Chinook Middle School, to Horse Heaven Hills Middle School, and to Lincoln Elementary, and I continue just to be really impressed with the excellent teaching, and this happening in our classrooms, and just really high levels of student engagement. Last Thursday, I had the honor of attending the ESD 123 Crystal Apple Award Ceremony, and formally presenting the 2024 KSD Crystal Apple Award to Casey Ferguson, who is a 6th grade English Language Arts Teacher at Chinook Middle School. And if you don't know, the award, the Crystal Apple Award honors outstanding educators in our region from nine different districts. The award ceremony happens at the ESD, and then each winner is submitted to the Washington State Teacher of the Year Award Process. So we're really proud of Casey and the work that she's doing. Also, I just wanted to highlight that tonight is the Regional High School Art Award Ceremony. And I'm unfortunately not there because I'm here, but a board meeting conflict, but I did get to visit the exhibit at CBC last week, and I made my selection for Superintendent's Choice Award. And our student artwork is, is just amazing. Robyn's posted, communications has posted a lot of the photos online, and so you can take a look there. They're just, it was really hard to make a selection for Superintendent's Choice, but I did. And Matt Scott, who's Assistant Superintendent K-12, he's there tonight on, in my place, helping award our students. So I wanted to mention that. And then I did meet with Mallory and Annie today, and I know Annie was not able to be here tonight, but Mallory should be here. And we just had an opportunity to talk a little bit about how things are going with the new model that we put in place this year, which is having a student board representative and a representative-elect. And both Mallory and Annie had some really good reflections and feedback for how we could maybe modify things a little bit for next year. And so I'll loop back with the board and share that information. We also talked about the timelines coming up for selecting the rep-elect for next year. So the deadline for those applications, which we haven't really started to publicize yet, the deadline's May 15th. But last year, London did a video that we could put on social media and out to schools to help encourage students to apply. So Mallory and Annie are gonna work with Robin, and we're gonna, Robin doesn't know that yet, but she just found out, that we're gonna work on getting a video made. And then, like I said, I'll share some of the feedback that they shared with me, just thinking about how can we make this a meaning, you know, meaningful for both the student rep and the rep-elect as we go into next year. And then I think, you know, tonight, there's, there are a couple budget-related presentations. So, you know, with the sharing that's happened tonight, I mean, we all understand and acknowledge that there is a need for mental health services for young people in our community. If there were people who could come into our schools and provide that service, we would, you know, gladly keep our doors open for that to happen. The problem is the money. The problem is the budget and the sources of funding. And so you're gonna hear a number of different presentations tonight, and I would encourage people to stay for the budget presentations, because the one thing that we can't, we can be super creative, but we can't create money where there isn't money. To keep things or maintain things means cuts in other areas. That's just the bottom line. So I just, I want people to understand the budget side of things. I think we all agree that the need is there. It's a real need. It's the money that's the issue. And so I'm gonna give an enrollment update to just kind of, because enrollment equals dollars, and so I'm gonna give a little update on that. Vic's gonna give a budget presentation and highlight those different kind of pots of funding, what's being paid for, what we've been paying for through ESAR, and what isn't gonna be able to continue unless something else were to get cut. And that would mean other people and other programs would have to go, right? I mean, those are just the harsh realities when you come to budgeting. So we're also gonna give a legislative update, so you can get a picture of, you know, where do we get most of our money? From the state. And so the things that happen at the legislature have direct influence on what we can afford. And so you're gonna hear that tonight, too. So again, I would encourage everybody to stay and just get that piece of the information as well. So that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Mike?
This week I have nothing. I've been so good for so long, and I failed this week.
Dr. Miller?
I'm not sure that's a fact. Your being busy is a type of life.
It happens.
First of all, I, this past week, I did have a chance, or I guess in the last week, was the Future Chef's Competition, which was a lot of fun, really, really great work that the kids did. It was, I mean, the food was amazing, very impressive. And got to see a lot of, a lot of the students, but all, younger students, but also the tri-tech kids who are helping. They're just very professional. They did a great job and a lot of fun. And the other thing, I think, just to echo Tracy, I, I hope the community understands, we recognize the importance of all these different areas, and certainly mental health is, is very important and has a very important place. The difficulty that we have is, is that unfortunately, as we've talked about the last few weeks, you know, we've inherited a bit of a crisis in terms of the budget. We're running into massive deficits. And if, I mean, cuts are gonna be made, we've already talked about that, we're going to have to cut stuff. It's just a matter of what, and where, and how much, and trying to figure out what we can and what we can do without. I, I, you know, to the, to the presenter's point, at some point, we're not deciding between extras and extras. You know, this isn't, we're deciding between needs and needs. And it's a tough decision to make, and inevitably, it's a discussion, to be frank, I lose sleep over, but it's not an easy, it's not an easy question and not easy decisions that we're gonna have to make, but they're gonna be, they're gonna be painful for everybody.
Thank you. Sir, Brittany? Thank you. Sir, Brittany?
Yeah, I had to pull out my notes because I concluded my tour of schools temporarily. I still have some schools left, but need to wrap it up so we can focus on the hiring of our successor, or deputy successor superintendent. So I had my last scheduled school visit on Friday, and I will resume that again after spring break. I have ten schools left. Legacy is one of them. High on my list. Haven't made it there yet. But I will say that I was in a meeting with some Legacy students earlier today, and I also fell in love right away. So very much looking forward to my visit with, at your school sometime very soon. So um, I met with Brian Massey at Amen Creek. That was a fun visit for me. That's my kid's homeschool, so I felt very comfortable there. We had a great conversation. I was already familiar with the school, so it was an easy, just kind of refresher of what is happening there at the school. Um, also went to Kumayakin, which is my children's home school, but I'm not as tied in with what's happening at the high school. Your kids get older and a little more independent, and you just don't know as much about what's happening with them. So that was a really great visit for me to get more familiar with where they are every day for six and a half hours. So had a great visit there, was really impressed with some of the things that Mr. Chellin had to discuss. He had a presentation up full of data that will be really pertinent to um, the subcommittee that Josh and I are on, looking at graduation rates and post-secondary experiences. So very excited to get started on that and circle back with Mr. Chellin and talk about some of that data. Um, I met with uh, Mrs. Gonzalez at Hawthorne. Um, I loved my visit to Hawthorne because I was met by Christian and Riley. They opened the doors for me, walked right in, shook my hand, said hello, Mrs. Gladhill, took me on an entire tour of the school. I, and then took me to the principal's office. So I was there at the school for twenty minutes before I made it to visit with the principal. And I have to tell Mrs. Gonzalez, I've been trying, I've been forgetting to email her, but I said I was going to go to their McTeacher Night that night, and I had something come up and I couldn't make it. But I was very disappointed that I didn't get to hang out with the Hawthorne staff and students that evening. So next year I'll be there. Um, I did a visit at Lincoln Elementary, which I was probably of all of the schools, probably least familiar with Lincoln before my visit there. And really got a, um, an idea there for their, they have, they have a high-performing school and got a sense for some of the um, interventions they've done there that have had an impact on that. And excited to look into that further, too, when we have the opportunity to do that. Uh, the last school I visited was Chinook Middle School, and so I was excited to see their orchestra here today. Had a great visit with Mr. Davis. Uh, he, he is very proud of the programs they have at Chinook. And he showed me some wonderful programs. I was impressed by everything I saw, but I was particularly impressed with their. And I don't know the name of the course. It's their C T E course, um, career explorations, maybe. Yeah, so the students in the class spend, I think he said, twenty-one days uh, exploring a career path. And then they, and they had hands-on experience. He had a kitchen in there. They had, you know, the fake babies that cry. They had uh, graphic arts. The, the, the classroom was just full of very engaged students that were interested and just taking in everything that they were learning. It was so fun to see. Um, I did take Mallory up on her invitation from last school board meeting to come to the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee meeting this morning. And it was incredible to be in a group of, I think we had thirty-five to, I don't know how many kids we had. A room full of kids, that room full of kids. And to hear the dynamic discussion that was happening there, we have such impressive kids in our school district. And they were discussing, I don't want to go into too much detail because it's really Mallory's report to make. But was impressed with the um, quality of the discussion and even made the comment to Tracy that when I was their age, there's no way that I had the mental awareness and capacity and fortitude to, to have those types of discussions. So we've got a great thing happening with the kids in our district and with this generation. So just super impressed. Um, sorry, I'm going to take a whole meeting. Um, I did start the review of our candidates, so I've spent a lot of time doing that, just getting familiar with the applications we have for our um, superintendent. And then would just like to add to Dr. Miller's thoughts that um, I couldn't agree more that we need mental health services in our schools. That's a program that I love and am on board with. And also just want the community to understand that, you know, we got some emails about it this week, and we have uh, public that have come to make comments tonight. That's actually not a decision that we've had a discussion about as a board. That was strictly my understanding, kind of, and Dr. Pierce has talked about that, that it's kind of just the end of the contract. It's not a conscious decision that we as a board had a discussion about and decided we're going to remove mental health services. So, but because of the level of interest, I think that it is a discussion that we can have. And there might be some out-of-the-box ways, out-of-the-box thinking, you know what I'm trying to say? Some creative ways to look at funding. And so I don't know if that's, you know, we have a levy committee. I don't, I don't even know if this is allowed, but can we have a committee that looks at mental health funding? I don't know. So I gave and Dr. Pierce, if that's something that we can explore, I think there's enough interest. I'm supportive of it, that if we could look into how to keep it, I don't know. Kind of to Diane's point, that maybe there's another way of providing these services. Um, I'm, I would be in favor of that. So. Um, let me just check my notes real quick and make sure that was everything. Okay, that's probably enough. So.
Thank you, Brittany. Micah?
Okay, so thank you, Brittany, for that um, dialogue.
It won't be as long next time.
Um, I spent, I mean, I don't know, I like hour, so we're, obviously, we, you're hiring a superintendent, right? So I've spent um, hours and hours and hours, like, poring over the, the notes. And for me, I think, I, I know we, we have a, a meeting today. We're going to discuss it more after this meeting. But what I wanted to do is I really wanted to get like the, try to read and get the sense of the personality of the people, rather. I know that the facts are going to be presented to us, but when you kind of read their, what, the essays that they present to us, you kind of get a sense of them. So um, I really tried to spend a lot of time to be prepared as I could because I know it's a very, very important hire. Um, I also went to the Future Chef Competition, and I mean, just like, these, these like little kids, right? They're cooking these crazy meals and it's so fun. And, and actually, my favorite thing about it is going into the kitchen behind, in the back. Cause the, cause you have these little, these are like super small little kids, and they're just like, just baking and cooking away, and it's so fun, and it's so funny and cute. And then, and it's, it's really impressive. I think Josh mentioned this, is like, every kid has a, has like a senior graduate, kind of. And, and that, the, the high school student who's helping them is, is also like really impressive, you know, and they're, and they're really like, they're not, they're not, you know, cooking their recipe. They're, they're, they're getting the recipe from the kids, and then they're letting the kids lead it, but they're really helping them along the way. And it's just a really kind of neat process to see um, back in the kitchen. I actually hate cooking, so um, uh, I appreciate them doing it. Um, and, but the food was, was fantastic. Um, I also want to say a special thank you to some of the, I, some of the community members, you know? Um, it's, it's interesting, you said you're in this position, and, and people just say things about you and to you all the time, right? And, and so I always really, really try to like, I have a desire, um, I think most of us do, to try to like, connect with the community, but it's hard, you know? Cause they don't, because there's not always a time where, where we're crossing paths and stuff. So, but there are a few community members who have reached out to me lately, and I just want to express my appreciation. They know who they are. Um, for actually engaging in a meaningful conversation, rather than just calling me names. They can, we have, actually have a conversation, and we can get to issues and talk about things, and I can listen and hear, and they can listen and hear. And, and we can understand each other, rather than just, um, you know, hearing names. Uh, so I really appreciate that. And then I do want to also address the, the counselor, so the, the counselor situation. So from a board perspective, um, you know, a year and a half ago, or whatever it was, we, we like signed this short-term contract with this extra additional money that we didn't have before, but we just got like a bit of money that we could apply towards something, right? So we kind of just signed that contract, and then, and then when we started hearing about it, I actually didn't even know what it, I, I knew that contract was expired. I think we all knew that, that that was expired. But when I heard about this counselor issue, I didn't even put it together. I didn't even know what everybody was talking about. So then I went back and I said, well, we don't have money for, for this, like, and then, and like Josh mentioned, like, like, things are going to get cut. So like, the, this council situation, this is one thing that we're talking about now. But, but the next, the next month, and the next month, and the next month, we're going to have other groups of people in here. Because other things are, because it's a guarantee, things are going to get cut. Like, that is going to happen. So we have to decide what things to cut, and that's a super hard decision because no matter what thing you cut, somebody's upset and somebody's mad, right? So it, that's, it's just, it's going to happen. So um, it's a tough decision, and it's a, it's a crappy decision, but um, it, it, we got to figure it out. Um, and then I do want to echo last thing is to please stay in the meetings. I was really encouraged to see everybody still here after the public comments. Cause I feel like we hear a lot, and then people leave. And then when we discuss the budget and we discuss the, the things, that there's two people in the audience, right? And we're like, man, we had seventeen people come and complain about this, but now we're actually giving a presentation about this thing, and nobody's here to hear it, you know? And then the next time we get an email, and then I'm like, man, are you guys understanding? Can you go back and watch the meeting and then send me that email, right? And so I really appreciate people being here. Uh, so thank you for being here. Uh, uh, we love you guys. We love you. I've been to Legacy a bunch of times, too, a, a whole bunch of times, and we care about you. That's why we're here. We love you and we care about you, and we wanted, we wanted to create the best scenario for you. It's just really hard. And there's really tough decisions to make, so just understand that.
Thank you, Micah. So I will be quick. I attended the Future Chefs program as well. However, I went as a observer. Um, I didn't feel it was right to judge when my wife's student was one of the competitors. So I figured it would be better that I just watched. Um, there was, I just want to follow up. So there was a discuss, not a discussion. So there was a comment maybe two meetings ago. Um, someone got up and discussed F1 filings and um, kind of made the assumption that board members were doing some stuff illegal because stuff hasn't been filed. Um, I just want to clarify. So the F1 filing that we do is an annual filing, just like taxes. So that's due April fifteenth. So if you're looking at whatever you're looking at online to see if board members are reporting gifts or money, or whatever it is that they have received, you, you really can't get an accurate, accurate picture until after that date. So if you're looking in February and coming to a conclusion, um, that's, that's just misinformation. So I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't want the community to think that um, board members up here are doing something illegal, like it was insinuated in that, in that comment. So um, so reminder, F1 filings are due April fifteenth.
All the gifts we get.
All, all, all the special gifts, yep. All right. Moving on, reports and discussions. First up is enrollment analysis. Dr. Pierce?
Okay, so during the last budget presentation, the board asked for some follow-up analysis of our enrollment situation because obviously there's a big connection between enrollment and budget. And so uh, what you're going to see tonight is a little bit deeper dive into our enrollment uh, situation and trend. And uh, we can start to look at some of the factors that are influencing enrollment. And I think the kind of key question is, what, if anything, can we be doing to increase enrollment? Are there, is there anything that we can do? So I want to talk a little bit about headcount versus F T E, our full-time equivalent, and make sure everybody understands that and how that drives apportionment, which is the money that we get from the state. Take a look at just real briefly statewide enrollment trends, and then dig deeper into our K S D trends. So headcount, when we talk about enrollment, sometimes we talk about headcount enrollment, and that means each individual student who's enrolled in our system. And then when we're in the budget presentations, we're typically talking about F T E enrollment, and that is full-time equivalent. And that's the portion of the enrollment for which we collect apportionment. So an example would be a Running Start student. Sally's enrolled at Kinnawick High School. Uh, she attends Running Start for half the day. So Sally's a one-point-oh headcount, but she's a point-five F T E. So I just think it's important that we differentiate and are clear about what, which one are we talking about when we're talking about enrollment? Uh, we're paid on F T E. So how apportionment works is for each one-point-oh F T E, we collect about nine thousand five hundred dollars from the state. So if a student is a one-point-oh headcount and a point-five F T E, we're collecting half that amount from the state. And in that example, if it's a Running Start student, that money is flowing through our system into the higher ed system because that's where Running Start happens. So uh, in December, uh, O S P I released some information showing the statewide enrollment trend and uh, what it's looking like by grade level. There's some uh, summary information on the side about which grade levels have increased. They're seeing increase in Running Start uh, statewide and uh, seeing decreases in kindergarten and in the elementary grades. And what the state attributes that to is uh, potentially additional homeschooling and declining birth rates. So incoming classes of kindergartners are smaller than our outgoing graduating classes of seniors, and that's a statewide trend. And then we're going to show what this looks like right now in our district. So this is a big picture. You can get this data off of the report card, the um, O S P I report card. This shows uh, headcount enrollment for the state. And I, I think one thing you can see obviously is, you know, what enrollment looked like pre-COVID, what happened during COVID, and where we are as the state now after COVID. If you look on the report card site, you'll see that same chart. You can get it for K S D or any other district in the state. Um, and it is headcount, but it's not very clean data. We have very clean data here in our district that we have to report to the state because that's what drives our apportionment. So um, what the data I'm going to show you is slightly different from the data that you're going to see on the state site because that's because I'm showing very clean data that we've reported to the state. So if you take a look at our headcount enrollment, uh, that's what you're looking at at the chart here. So you can see uh, you know, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, where we were in terms of headcount uh, pre-COVID, uh, nineteen, twenty, how we took that dip, which is pretty typical across the state with COVID, and where we are now in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. So as I look at this, I think kind of the big things to, to point out is our October twenty-three headcount is a hundred and sixty-seven higher than last year's October twenty-two headcount. Uh, it's, our twenty-three headcount for October is a hundred and three lower than it was October twenty-nineteen, which I'm calling pre-COVID. Um, but it's eighty-six higher than it was in October eighteen, which is pre-COVID. Uh, so between, if you take a look at like a three-year period, uh, between October twenty-seventeen and twenty-nineteen, pre-COVID, the three-year increase was three hundred and twenty-nine. This is headcount. Um, if you take it, if you take a look at the three-year period from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three, post-COVID, that increase is five-fourteen. Some of that increase, though, is making up for the decrease that occurred during COVID. Another uh, view of this is F T E, and this is, this is what drives apportionment, which is funding from the state. So this shows our F T E enrollment trend. Uh, again, you can see um, that where we are today, eighteen, eight-thirty-five, um, is higher than it was um, last year and the two previous years, but it's a little lower than we were in twenty nineteen, twenty. There was a period of time, um, even prior to this, where we were growing by, you know, hundreds um, each year. And then it kind of leveled off. Then we had COVID, that dip, and we're kind of coming back. But we're not seeing that same growth happening that we saw years ago. And part of that is because of kindergarten enrollment, and we're going to get into that in just a minute, along with birth rates. So when you look at F T E enrollment, again, I don't want to just read everything to you, but it's kind of looking at where were we compared to last year? We're higher, um, but we're lower than we were in twenty-nineteen, but we're higher than we were in twenty-eighteen, not by much. Uh, we increased over a three-year period pre-COVID, and we've increased over the three-year period post-COVID, but some of that's making up for the decrease that we saw during COVID. Um, another uh, thing to look at because it has uh, an effect on money is Running Start. Now, Running Start, I want to make sure I'm super clear here. Running Start's a great program for students and families. And uh, so, you know, we're in, we're in favor of Running Start if students want to pursue Running Start. So that's not my point here. It's a great program. However, it does have an impact on our, on our bottom-line budget. Because if a student is um, enrolled in Running Start, the portion of their apportionment uh, doesn't come to the district. It goes to the, the program. So there's kind of an economy of scale um, at work with some of this. And so what I wanted to show on this is how uh, Running Start enrollment has um, increased and kind of continued to increase, which is a great thing for students and families. Students are, right, um, earning high school credit and college credit at the same time. It's a savings to the family in terms of tuition. Uh, but if you look at having four hundred and fifty-two students enrolled in Running Start, or I should say F T E, having four hundred and fifty-two F T E in Running Start, having 452 FTE in running start means $4.29 million less that we're getting as a district. If those students were not in running start and they were at the high school, we would be getting $4.29 million more. Again, my point is not that we don't want kids to do running start. My point is that it just, it is a, uh, it is one impact to the budget.
Dr. Pierce, so just to make sure I understand this right. So 452 would be roughly 900 kids.
If they were on .5, .5.
Is that what most of them are or?
Um, I, I don't know. I don't know if I have that data at my fingertips. I don't know if, if, if Vic knows or not. But students can be like .4 running start or .2 running start. So it kind of varies.
Okay.
So if they're a running start student, let me just make sure I understand. So if they're a running start student, but they're .4 running start, then we keep the .6? Okay. So it is incremental.
Right. And so they're enrolled with us, right, for maybe um, that portion of the day. And then they go to running start for the other portion of the day. So we don't need to pay for them to be in a class, right? For the portion of the day that they're in running start, but there's still a counselor that's seeing that student. There's still a, a, you know, a principal that's working with that student. So there's an economy of scale here that, you know, if you've got lots and lots of students participating in running start, which again is a good thing on the one hand, it does have an impact to, to the budget.
But, but if, if those kids were to go, I mean, just to be, to be fair, if all of those kids suddenly came back from running start, we would have significant increase in costs. We'd probably have to do other things to accommodate all those students. So it's, it's not as simple as saying.
You would have to find places and classes for those students.
We may need to hire more people. We may need other, other, other things. I, I guess my point in saying that is it's not as simple as they just pull people from running start. We got $4 million.
No, no, no.
It's not that simple at all.
Not that simple, but it's just, it's just a, a piece of data to be aware of. Um, so uh, the other thing to look at is uh, just cohort survival, which means are students staying in our system? Like once they enroll as a first grader, do they persist and go to second grade? And then persist and go to third grade and so forth? That's what we call cohort survival. So you've seen this chart before. It was back in October. It was one of uh, the presentations Vic did early on with budget and enrollment. And it just shows, for example, uh, June 2023, like th- those kindergartners who were kindergartners in June, are they, did they now go up to first grade and, and persist? And so the, you can see that the cohort, cohort enrollment is pretty stable. So like these first graders, who were first graders in the 2022, 23 school year, are now second graders in the 23, 24 school year. And we actually have six more of them. So we like gained, right? So in most, most of the places, we're steady or gaining, but there's some grades where um, there's, there's some losing, right? So like we, fifth grade was a minus 15 and sixth to seventh was a minus five, but then seventh to eighth was a plus 16. So there's some enrollment, you know, cohort stability. But what you see here too is the, look at the number of kindergartners in September 2023 compared to June 2023. So incoming kindergarten classes is quite a bit smaller. And if you look at kindergarten enrollment and, when you're talking about kindergarten, headcount and FTE is kind of the same thing. I mean, we, we, at elementary, you don't have parts of students going to running start or tri-tech or that kind of thing. So um, this is headcount enrollment, which is essentially the same as FTE enrollment. And you can see uh, like uh, back in 2014, we had 1,412 kindergartners. Now in 2023, we have 1,207 kindergartners. So that's, that's a, a, a pretty big difference. And then that group of kindergartners is going to matriculate on through the system. So overall, when we talk about enrollment declining, we have to plan for not only like the short-term impacts of that, but the longer-term impacts of that as these students are now matriculating through the system. So when you look at uh, the cohort survival data, and we, we've got enrollment stability with cohort, but we've got smaller cohorts entering our system. So um, just recapping what we just saw in that kindergarten slide, we've got our headcount um, is lower in kindergarten. Even though our overall headcount is up, our kindergarten headcount is down compared to last year. Um, it's 200 lower than it was in 2019 and 155 lower than it was in 2018. Um, the three-year decline from 17 to 19 pre-COVID was 39. The three-year decline post-COVID is 169. So why is that happening? Why are there, why is kindergarten lower? Well, if you look at birth rate data and the state looked at it and this is our local data, you, you start to see why. So this is a little bit of complicated slide. I just want to talk us through it real quick. The first column shows the birth year. Um, the next column, this is data that we get from trios. Um, the third column is data from Benton Franklin Health District. And this is if the maternal mother was a resident of Kennewick, the birth counts in this column. Um, and then this would be that, that group's kindergarten start year, five years later, right, after they were born. And then what our enrollment was that year and what percent of that birth from either the trios data or the Kennewick data, did we end up getting? So um, I'll just have an example here so we can see. So in 2013, 1,361 babies were born, based on trios data. 1,403 babies were born whose maternal mother was a Kennedy, Kennewick resident. Those kids started kindergarten in 2018 and our enrollment that year in 2018 for kindergarten was 1,362. So we got like basically 100%, if you go with a trios number, 100% of those births. I mean, it's not a kid by kid, right? It's, but, um, and then, you know, 97% of the Kennewick data. So um, when, when you look at, and I don't know if this is, it's just a piece of data. I don't know that it means anything, but all-day kindergarten, we used to have half-day kindergarten in our state and that's what the state paid for. And then the state started funding all-day kindergarten. That started in 2016. So I just made a note of that here. I'm not saying it means anything, but you can see um, kind of not the, you know, the birth rates are going down. And also we're seeing a little bit lower, at least we did in, in 2021, a little bit lower percentage of those births ending up as kindergartners. Although, you know, it's still like up into, you know, it's, it's not in the upper 90s. It's in the lower 90s. So uh, you know, what, what does this data mean? Well, if you look at um, our projections, so how do we project? Kinder, projecting kindergarten enrollment is the hardest part. Um, so we can look at the birth rate data and maybe project at the, you know, eight, maybe we're going to get 86% of that. Um, maybe we can try to get 90 or higher, but you know, is there something we can do? Is there something, I mean, that is a question I've been thinking about. Is there something we can do to help people know that we have quality, great public education? Um, and you know, we want your kindergartner. But even if we got 100% of the kindergartners that we could get based on the birth rate, the birth rate's going down. And so I just tried to put to what's like, how, how many students? What difference does that make? So uh, like if we had a goal or something to try to get 90% of the students, you know, that, the, the difference between the 86% and the 90% is like half a million dollars. And that's real money that can pay for things, right?
Yeah. Do you have a sense on the move-in rate? People moving into the community, moving into Kennedy building, or, or Kennewick building homes? Do you have a sense of that?
I don't. That's a, a piece of data I don't have. So um, I'm just going to finish up and then I think that I'm going to acknowledge like there's some data we don't have and we could have. So um, we do have homeschool data and our data is showing, yeah, we did see an increase with um, homeschool during COVID. But like we have less homeschool declarations of intent to homeschool this year than last year. So uh, I, I hope you can read this chart, but this is like the total. So yeah, it was up at 693, right, in 2021? But now we're back down to like 346, which is about where we were in 2019, 20. Um, the other thing, a piece of data is our population in Kennewick. Uh, so oops. In 2019, the annual growth rate in Kennewick was 2.2, but it's, it's declined since then. And so this uh, these yellow bars show Kennewick population. The blue line is Benton and Franklin County's annual growth rate and the red line is Kennewick's annual growth rate. So all these things are factors into enrollment and enrollment projections. So just kind of a summary, um, like our current headcount and FTE is on par with where we were pre-COVID. Um, but our current headcount and FTE growth trend is declining and the data suggests it's going to continue to decline based on birth rates and city data. Our running start FTE numbers, you know, is increasing. Um, homeschool uh, increased during COVID, but it's now on par with where it was before that. Private school data is, is another piece of data and Vic and I are still trying to work to see what we can mine out of our system. You know, anecdotally, I, I, when I go out and visit principals, um, you know, like one of the principals I talked to just yesterday was like, they, they had a sit-down meeting with a family who was interested in bringing their students back. They go to a private school currently and they want to enroll their students at the school. And the parents had some questions about programs and think, and curriculum. And so the principal was able to answer those questions and kind of assure the parent about how we teach um, sexual health and that kind of stuff. And so, but that's the, I, I like, I don't have hard quantifiable data around private school enrollment. So.
Tracy, can I ask you a question about that? So the declarations to homeschool, if someone is in a private school, they don't need to fill out that declaration?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there any way we could ask maybe a handful of the private schools? Just to ask, go to them and say, hey, can we get your kindergarten numbers for the last three years? And, and then part of it is, is when we look at here, like you said, we were in the, for the most part, in the high 90s uh, in terms of percentage of, of captured kindergartners. And, and all of a sudden we're dropping into the 80s, which would suggest that we're, we're having a group that we're, that are disappearing. And the only place it appears from what we're talking about is, is one of two things. They could move. And, and our population numbers should then in theory be dropping amongst that section in this area, amongst that population. Or they're going to a private school because if they're homeschooled, we'd, we'd capture it. So if, you know, if, if we talk to some of the, the, and, and we just want to see the kindergarten numbers because if we talk to them, the other thing in thinking about this, a, a lot of people are going to want their kid in the same, try to maintain their kid in the same school. Pulling a kid out of school is, is traumatic for everybody, parents, student. If they have a problem and they want to go to a private school, I, I would expect they'll probably start there. And so they would put their kid in kindergarten. And so if we can see if that's the trend, that is the, where, where people that may have left for COVID came back in other areas, they're not coming back. They're, those are people that are just getting enrolled straight into kindergarten. And, and then we can see, hey, what can we do from there? But it would, it would also help us know if this is a more definitive trend because I suspect if they start in kindergarten, it will be harder to get them back into the public school system than someone who may be left in fourth grade and was there a year or two and then may come back. Because I think once they get into public school systems, they, a lot of their fears are a link. They, they say, hey, this is great. They do a great job.
And I'd be curious to know the percentage of the homeschool declarations compared to the overall enrollment of the school district? Just to see if that's, because I know that, you know, by raw numbers, we're pretty much on par right now, 2023 compared to 2019, 20. But what's the percentage compared to our overall enrollment? Has that changed at all? Because if we have a declining enrollment, that might be a greater percentage. And even then, 36 students is still, what did we decide? Half a million dollars. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
Just a two-second comment. Yeah. I mean, I feel like people are moving into the city. So that's driving enrollment up. The birth rate is dropping. I, I think that the private schools are exploding. And I think just understanding that whole equation with, we just don't quite, you know, have a good grasp on like how many people are moving in? How many people are going to private schools? You know, I, I know it's really hard to take. Um, I suggested maybe taking some like surveys or data surveys or you, you know, like I don't want to spend like a crazy amount of money, but, but, but I don't want to spend any money, but.
Right. That's why we're trying to see what we can do without spending any.
But I, I do want to like at least like talk about that, like potentially like, because I mean, you could, you might be able to spend $10,000 on a survey and it might equal, it gets some really good answers and that could turn into a half a million, right? And so that's a really good investment. So that's kind of my thought is just really understanding that equation. There's a, there's, there's puzzle pieces that we just don't have, right? Like how many people are moving in? How, you know, and so, so I just wish we could have a better grasp on that.
I suspect the private schools don't like to share that information as, as much as they, as, as they, as they would, but.
Yeah.
They might, they might.
They don't, they don't have to brag when, when, when they're lined up at 3:00 AM to register. That's, I think bragging enough. But my, my question um, is, so if someone is, has a kindergartner and they're coming into the schools and they're going to homeschool, they still have to file a intent uh, homeschool with us? If we're, if they're in our district?
Correct.
As a kindergartner, right?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Well, let me take that back and let me double, because technically I think the law says you don't have to, you're, you don't have to enroll your child until grade, until age eight. I think it's age eight, but I want to verify.
Okay.
So I think that we wouldn't, we would, could potentially have people doing homeschool for.
Couple of years.
With that, and not having to do that.
Until they get.
Yeah. Until it's that. Um, so I'll follow up and just verify what the.
Okay.
Enrollment age requirement is.
Awesome.
And again, I think part of, just a reminder, why this discussion is so important is because ultimately, like you said, this dramatically impacts what money we even have to, to play with and, and to move around. And so, you know, if we can help get another 100 kids into the schools, that's, that's another million dollars.
Right. And it's like, exactly. I mean, if you look around at what's happening across our state, there are districts across our state who are closing schools, who are uh, combining schools um, over on the west side, I mean, in highly populated areas. So I think it's, and I'm not saying that that's where we are, but uh, you know, enrollment has a huge impact on the budget. And there are great things happening in our schools. I see them every day. You see them every day. And if any of our enrollment is not because of birth rate or not because of things that are beyond our control, but are of, you know, people worried about, you know, enrolling in our schools, we want to, we want to see what can we do about that.
Right.
So you got to understand the data to be able to understand where are the potential opportunities? Right? Like we can't make people have more babies. We can't, you know, there's things we can't do, but we can, you know, try to get, you know, talk about the, um, you know, great things happening in our schools and, and have information nights for parents, maybe who have kindergarten. I mean, there's all kinds of things like that we could possibly do.
Awesome. All right. Moving on to the legislative update. Dr. Pierce, here's.
This will be quick and then I will hand it over to Vic.
He looks thrilled a little bit.
So legislative update, uh, the session ended on March 7th. So this presentation really highlights funding-related items connected to the board's legislative priorities and just is a little bit of a lead-in to Vic's presentation. So we're going to look at some of the things that came out of the legislator, legislature that affect our local district budget. And then I think it helps us also think about what our, what continued legislative efforts are needed because the reality is we are not getting enough money from the state to fund all the things that we would like to fund. Uh, so that's where advocacy comes in. We've talked about MSOC, right, the Maintenance Supplies and Operating Costs. We work closely um, with legislators before session. We meet with them and we shared with them, these are all the funding gaps. Uh, Mike was in that meeting and Gabe was in that meeting. And then we, we uh, all throughout the session, uh, keep in contact with them and we send them data and we send them information um, to help them understand what the needs are. And then, you know, um, then when they have to make decisions, hard decisions at the legislature, just like we do at the local level, and then we have to figure out what are the impact of those decisions. So with that, like I said, uh, final adjournment was March 7. So with that, like I said, final adjournment was March 7th. Just reminding, the board's legislative priorities are largely funding-centered, because, again, without money, you can't provide people and programs that students will benefit from. So we're going to highlight just real quick, special ed funding, transportation funding, the maintenance supplies, operating costs are MSOC funding, and capital funding. So what you'll see with special ed is that House Bill 2180 passed, and it increases the special education enrollment funding cap. So this is something that's been pushed for the last couple of years. Last session, the legislature increased the cap from 13.7% to 15%. So what, what this means is there's a cap right now. If you have more than, currently, if you have 17% of your district's population that is identified as special education or IEP, you're not getting funding for all of those students, because the state caps it at 15%. Now, so there is real money going into this, but our current, and so they've increased the cap from 15 to 16. So that is a good thing overall for the state, but it doesn't result in any actual additional money for our district, because our, our percentage for special education right now is 13.5%. We are below the cap. If we, if we, you know, get to that higher level, then we will benefit from that cap being raised. But right now, it doesn't really have any impact on us. Transportation funding, so you might be reading in some of the summaries that the legislature allocated 76.9 million, but it's to account for a correction. They underestimated how much the need was going to be to fund '23, '24. I mean, the state did. So the legislature said, okay, we'll backfill that, we'll give you that money. So this is really maintenance-level funding, because the cost was estimated less than what the need was statewide. So it's not like this gives us a bunch of new money. Then you might see that there was some money to allow contract bus drivers to opt into health retirement. That doesn't affect our district, because our, our bus drivers are district employees. They're not contract employees. So that doesn't affect us. April, our transportation director is going to come next meeting to talk about bus purchases and so forth, like she does every year. So just as FYI, there was some, some bills being discussed about, like, requiring the purchase of zero emission or electric buses. That turned into grant funding available, which is good, given the cost and the lack of infrastructure and so forth. So there is funding to provide districts that choose to start transitioning from diesel to electric or other zero emission, but it doesn't require us to do that at this point. That might come at some point in the future. The final bill, though, does include a requirement that as soon as the total cost of ownership of zero emission buses is at or below that of diesel buses, then depreciation payments are only going to be provided for zero emission buses. So WASA, the, yeah, the Administrators Association, WASA, they're really working with OSPI and the Department of Ecology to ensure that that total cost of ownership includes total costs, the cost of the bus, the cost needed for infrastructure for electric or zero emission, the maintenance, the electricity. Because if we don't get depreciation on the diesel buses, that's a hit to us. MSOC, so we've been talking about MSOC, and you saw in Vic's presentations that the huge increases in utilities and insurance, and how that has a real hit to our budget. So under current law, MSOC per student allocations have to be adjusted annually for inflation. That's what the law says. But inflation isn't defined in the law or in the budget, and House Bill 2495 didn't clarify what that means either. So on the one hand, you'll find that MSOC funding for the state got increased overall. For 2023, the per-student funding increase was $20, $21 per student, so it went from 1,483 to 1,504, and that was a 2.1% inflationary increase. Well, for 2425, the inflationary increase is down. Like, they're giving us less in terms of percentage. It's a 1.9% inflationary increase. So yes, it's getting increased by $29 from 1,504 to 1,533, but the inflationary percentage is less.
Should be about.
So we're kind of getting a lower, right?
On that, just said, I just looked it up really quick. The US inflation rate in 2021 was 7, 2022 is 6.5, and 2023 is 3.4. We're not even close to that.
Right.
So just so people are aware, they're way underfunded, based on inflation.
Yes, way underfunded.
Yeah. And can I, I just want to comment on that, because that's, that slide, we talked about it a little bit in Vic's presentation, but just to point out, when you go back and you look at the school year 17, 18, 19, 20, we averaged $5.5 million for utilities, fuel, and insurance costs. When you turn around and you go '21, '22, '23, and projected '24, that's projecting at $8 million. So that's an $11 million increase that we've spent on those three things. So when we talk about what the heck's going on, and we spend a year and a half paying $5 for gas, filling up buses, that's bad policies that are driving that. So people need to understand, you, you got to get involved at the state level and let your folks know, these things are really impacting us here locally in the school district. So we're talking about funding, and we're talking about this stuff, that's $11 million.
Yeah. I mean, you can't not pay those.
Right.
I mean, it goes back to the HB 1368, these purchasing of zero emission school buses. This, this literally can cost us millions. And, and when, so, so when stuff is passed in Olympia, this is where we need the support of the community to give feedback, because if you can talk to your legislatures and help push, these things are going to hurt us in the school district, where we won't have money for things like mental health, because we're paying for a zero emissions bus. And while that's great, you know, we'd all love to have an electric vehicle, we've got tough decisions to make. And to me, I think mental health is more important than driving a zero emissions bus.
Hundred percent.
And I, I think it's also important to keep in mind, too, sorry, Micah, did you want, you go first?
No, you go.
Also, to keep in mind that we have an opportunity locally to make up for some of this lost funding by passing really healthy, robust, loved levies. And we have that coming up in 2026. And I can speak for myself, and I think I can speak for the other board members here, that we are very aware of that. It's on my mind every day. Every day, I'm counting down to February of 2026, and we're going to pass another levy. And so the decisions that we make up here are sometimes unpopular, but they are strategic to gain back the confidence and the support of a big segment of our community that is only now starting to gain trust in us again. So there are reasons why we do what we do. We have a long-term vision in mind when we're making these decisions. And so there might be things that you don't understand and that don't make sense, and I, I know I, for one, can do a better job of reaching out and explaining my rationale for that. I'm new to this, I'm going to work on that, please be patient with me. But that's at least one of the reasons that I make the decisions I make, is in 2026, I have to have a huge segment of the community onboard with passing a sizable levy here in Kennewick.
I just want to make one little comment, too. And it's, again, it's kind of along the same lines, is like, when we, you know, we've heard, like, Dodi, we hear things like, you guys are rushing to support a bill, or to, or to not support a bill. That's right. We do, sometimes we do rush, because we wanted it, because that bill has consequences and consequences and consequences. We're looking at budgets, and we're like, man, if this thing comes down, we get more mandates of more things we have to do that we don't get funding attached to it. Like, how do we do all these extra things without getting the money to do them? And then so it's like, well, we don't want that. And so that's where we're pushing back on the legislators. And so just like the whole thing, so it is a big, big picture in mind, or doing something like that.
So a little good news. There's a little good news that, coming out of the capital budget, and they have allocated funding for career and technical education projects. And the one, of course, that we are most, that we care the most about is TRITech, the Skill Center, because we're the host district there, and we know what a great program that is. And you heard in the last capital projects update about the expansion, the core expansion, and when Paul Randall was here recently to give his TRITech update, the core expansion. So this means they're getting the funding for the core TRITech expansion. So you'll hear more about the kind of plan and next steps when we do the next capital projects update, because as host district, that construction project lives with us. Now, it's important to note, this is money coming directly from the legislature to TRITech.
Yeah.
It's not bond funding. It's, we couldn't use this money and do any other school or any other capital project. This is directly right from the legislature to TRITech. We're just the host district, and so that's why we're really involved.
And when we do these types of things, are we purposeful about letting the community know why they're seeing things like this take place, and yet we're cutting mental health? You know, I mean, because the average community member doesn't really pay attention. You know what I mean?
Right. How can you, how can you afford to pay for TRITech expansion, but you have to make these cuts over here? So that's why the communications part of it. We've been really trying to do, you know, more communications about levy and bond funding, and even like when people's property tax bills came out. But I mean, this is another opportunity to get, to be really clear about, this is money directly from the state to TRITech. Like, we can't, this is not KSD money. This is TRITech money.
Right.
Yeah.
And even TRITech can't spend it how they want. They have to use it within the framework.
That's right. It is for core modernization.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just to wrap up, and then I'm turning it over to Vic, so Vic can start making his way over here. We talked about School Construction Assistance Program, or SCAP, and we talked about that SCAP gap when we met with legislators before session. And so there is money in the capital budget for SCAP enhancement, which will increase that cost, construction cost allowance, or the CCA part of the SCAP formula. So right now, it's funded at $271 per square foot, and it's getting increased to $375 per square foot for 2025. That's a good thing, but the reality, construction's more like 500 per square foot, so it's still not, you know, completely covering. And this would, this will be important when we do go out for our next bond, because this is that state match or SCAP money that helps. The more money we get from the state, the less money we have to ask for, from our local community for that, for that bond. But kind of the, the icky, I'm just going to say, I think, the icky part of this is, if you, the reason why the legislature is allocating more money is because they know that school districts aren't passing their bonds. If you look across the state, because that 60% threshold is so challenging, and I gave you the election results, and it's just, it's not, it's not great. So there's more money available, because they know that there's less bonds passing. So that's just the icky part.
Thing.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce.
All right, Vic.
Vic, before you get started, one more piece I think we want to call out, Dr. Pierce, is, because I'm assuming everybody would be upset by this. We passed a resolution around House Bill 1915, our student trying to get this bill passed.
Oh, thank you, yes, yes.
And then, and, and this thing was great, and it was on board, and then we have one senator remove the graduation requirement, and the bill dies. So I would encourage people who believe in financial literacy to review that. Senator Wellman, I believe, is the senator who removed the graduation requirement, and maybe share that with your legislators, that you're disappointed that our kids now won't be required to do financial literacy from a state perspective.
And I, and I would say, to be honest, from our perspective, I, I really don't care what Olympia does on this, because we've talked about it, I think all of us agree. This is something that's important to us, and we will push forward with implementing that as part of graduation in some form or another.
Right.
But, but yeah, it is frustrating that something as simple and as universal as financial literacy and, and other things that are far more controversial seem to pass without problems. It's, it's frustrating.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did mean to mention it, so I just want to say one thing as well, to reiterate, just because the state didn't make it a mandate statewide, doesn't mean we can't continue with our work, which we are, of exploring how can we locally require financial literacy. And so the, you would have heard from Mallory, giving her report today, the work that happened on this topic at the Superintendent Advisory Council Group today. And so we're still moving forward with, and planning to bring the board a recommendation about financial literacy requirement sometime this spring to be implemented at some point in the future.
And truth be told, I think that's what, one of the things that I think most of us want is more local control, because it allows us to do things like that, is saying, look, literacy is important, or financial literacy is important to us in this area. Other areas, the state may not feel as important, but we feel it is. And, and the community has, has made that very obvious to us as well, is that financial literacy is important. And the survey that we did, it was, you know, hugely approved by families.
Just another frustration. Vic, you're up.
Yeah, all right. So some more budget information.
Yes.
We're still kind of in education mode here, and the next few meetings after this one, we'll get into some, some better updated numbers. But we'll look back at '23, '24 budget and talk a little bit about '24, '25. So I'll get into legislative session, just, Dr. Pierce pretty much talked about that. You know, they have different factors in there that, cost of living adjustment, you get in at 3.7%. So the higher that goes up, the more money we have to pay out of our own pocket, because we have more staff than the state funds, or more cost than the state provides. So if it's only 2%, it's better for us. As it goes up, it's worse. The retirement rate changes, so the employer's share of retirement.
Vic, just want to understand, the cost of living adjustment is prescribed by the state? So these are the same people that said the inflation was 2.1, but the cost of living was 3.7?
That's correct. Yep.
Sorry, I don't understand that. Go ahead.
So then the retirement rate, that's set by the state, the Department of Retirement, you know, how much money do they need to make that system work for, for people to pay into it? Generally, it's, it's anywhere from 10% to 14%. So that changes, and we have to pay our share, the employer's share. The employees pay a different share. Medical insurance, so the state drives that. $13,200 is what it costs this year per staff person. It's going to cost $14,136. So what that, that equals to is probably going to cost us about $2 million for the year for that increase, and they're going to give us about 1.4 or 5. Again, we have more para, it's more classified staff than what the state, you know, funds. And that difference normally is what you would go to a levy and say, okay, I need, you know, more money in the levy every year. And the first levy, the four-year levy that we tried to pass, you know, it did go up $5 million or more every year, and it did not pass. We did have a lot of people call and say, why is the levy going up so much every year? And you'll get a feel for, as we go through these presentations over the next few board meetings, of why it does need to go up that much. And we elected to reduce it, use our ESTRA money, because we had questions too on, you have a lot of ESTRA money, why don't you use some of that? But we're trying the best we can. It's not working out the best. So, MSOC, so Dr. Pierce talked about that. You know, not much there. It's probably going to be about $750,000 is what we get for an increase. And then we'll get some models from the state over the next couple of weeks, where they're going to, you know, we could kind of project it, but until they plug in all their information, you know, we have to kind of wait to kind of confirm that. Again, showing the '23, '24 budget, so this is a number you need to focus on, $16 billion. This is a deficit mainly because of the levy. We only got half a year of levy here in '23, '24. But to put this in perspective, if we had, then for '24, '25, if we had $16 million more of revenue and no increase to expenditures, this would be break even. You'd get $16 million to wipe that out, no increase in expenditures, so you'd have a balanced budget. And, you know, we're looking, we're looking at, this is probably going to be about eight or nine million dollar deficit. So this was from '23, '24. This top section is really the flexible money. This is a local-funded, basic ed-funded, so there's $18 million, that's, you know, we need that for the levy and things. Down here, and Dr. Pierce talked about running start, these are programs where the money comes in and the money goes out, or the money comes in and it's really supposed to be used for certain, you know, program services. If learning assistance funding went up by a million dollars, you really can't move that up here to where we really need the help. There is some overhead here, you know, costs, you know, that we pay payroll to, to services all these staff, and there's maintenance and different things. So you do get some overhead, but not, not quite enough. And there's that deficit again. So that was passed last year. We kind of look at it from, you know, basic ed, local-funded, is really what we're concerned about, and maybe we can move a little stuff around here, but it's really difficult to do. And then some of the information here, we. And then some of the information here, we discussed enrollment. So really, it's, we're now expecting about one point, you know, one five, up to maybe even one point five million dollar decrease. As Dr. Pierce showed you, kindergarten, for example, when it's off a hundred kids, you know, we budget, say, thirteen hundred, comes in at twelve hundred. So we're a hundred kids behind, that's a million dollars. And then that that goes to first grade, so you're still behind a hundred kids again at first grade, right? So that's a million dollars. So it's two million dollars, really. That that hundred kids of kindergarten decrease from budget has costed us a couple of million dollars. So that's what, in the how years, is kind of what we're looking at, and and we'll get to that. I'm going to bounce back from slide to slide here, just so you can kind of see where we were last year and, you know, how things are working.
Actually, is there a way we get a statistic on that, too? Because really, the number we want to see is is twelfth grade, the number of twelfth graders changed and the number of kindergartners changed, right? Because the twelfth graders are leaving, the kindergartners are coming in. If that number were stable, then our enrollment, in theory, should be roughly stable. But if the if kindergarten is down.
Yeah. And then there's, we'll get some other presentations where that, I can show you that.
Okay.
So kindergarten's down, and then you lose some first grade. But then you do get eighty to a hundred kids, generally, from first to maybe sixth or seventh, that probably move into the community and stuff, so that kind of offsets things a little bit, too.
Got it.
But not as much as we like, but. So so let's go to this slide here. This was from last year. Basically, here's that sixteen million down here. This was the budget. So you see here for twenty-four, twenty-five, we actually, we were getting kids back, you know, COVID, and so we thought, you know, we'd be pretty stable here for twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll talk about next year. And we didn't hit this, this was twenty-three, twenty-four. But then coming down this, when when the money changes, like here, we talked about MSOC, that would go down up here into, we estimated for five hundred thousand dollar increase for twenty-four, twenty-five. And these numbers are going to get updated, and and we did some estimates, so on and so forth. So we had about a five point four million dollar deficit. And that's really pretty manageable. You know, we don't fill positions, you know, we do some things, maybe get a little more money. And normally, we were at the point where, okay, we should be able to break even. And then, you know, and we were going to cut two to five million anyway, because we had, we still have about four or five hundred kids less in elementary than we had pre-COVID, and we knew that we were maintaining staff through ESAR, and we knew that those staff had to go away. So that was played in here, too. It wasn't shown, but it was discussed, you know, we'd have to make some cuts here and here. And then this would get better. We'd come out here to the next levy. These numbers would be a little better. We still have to raise it, you know, maybe thirty to forty cents, which is significant, but not near as significant as it's going to have to be after we update all these numbers. So and here's the fund balance. We we had projected thirty-five point nine million. We were not going to, this was a placeholder for transferring this money due to TRITech and some things. We're not going to do that anymore. We're trying to get this at forty-seven million by not spending money and managing the budget, which would make these numbers down here look a lot better and get us through to the levy. So that was the plan. And so now, this number up here is about one to one point five million dollars negative. One point five million negative, one point five million negative. And then that carries over. If you're, and then, so that was just one piece. Let me go back to the other. And then the levy equalization here, it's going down about another one point five to two million. So here's levy equalization. Instead of three point eight, this is like one point five. So you lost another two million. Instead of this being three, three hundred thousand oh six, it's going to be about two million dollars negative. So these numbers add up fast. So when you lose three million dollars here, this goes to eight point five, and then this goes to ten, and you lose another three million, it goes to thirteen, because this carries over. Like, Gabe, you're good at that math, right? Because you said at the last board meeting about the utilities. So so that's what we're dealing with. I mean, the situation is not that good. So we just kind of kind of work through it. So the ESAR, you know, we knew we were trying to use that to the best we could, keep the fund balance up and kind of ride this thing out, but some things have changed. So anyway, you kind of get the idea that we're going to update this. The next board meeting, we'll have the the increases here from the state. These were estimates from last year, and and we have some changes down here. And then how that ties in. Let me get, okay, so let me get back to this. We'll we'll kind of work on this a little bit with a few other slides. But I did want to show you back to kind of what Josh was saying with the funding. So here's how we're funded with the staffing from the state. So you see the district cost here, this is this year, pretty much right now, a hundred and twelve million is what we pay for certificateed staff, your teaching staff, you know, the whole certificate. And then we have about ten million or more for things like substitute cost, overload, athletic cost, different contracts, so a hundred and twenty-three million. Here's what we get from the state, based on their formula, based on enrollment. So short about twenty-nine million. And that's common, all school districts, you know, that's what they deal with. And then classified staff, same thing, there's a formula, eleven point one. Administrative staff, four point five. So about forty-four million point nine, forty-four point nine million we have come up with. We have some other funding, some of that overhead, some other things like investment interests, various other local revenues. So that gets us down about a forty million dollar difference here. And that's really where your levy comes in. So you got to pay for that. And you can say levy is paying for utilities, it's paying for this, paying for that. You can say it's paying for this forty million dollars. So our levy is about, bringing in about thirty-four million with the local effort assistance. So that's, you know, that's short by about five or six million. And then up here, here's the three point seven percent. So for our district, the the state's going to give us two point five million from that three point seven percent, based on their formula. It's going to cost us three point one million, because we pay more than the state to be competitive with other school districts and around school, surrounding schools. We got, you know, pay more and there's steps. You get credits, you get masters, you get more money. So the annual step advancement is at least one point two million that we got to pay for. The annual credit increase is at least seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that's been, you know, going up. It's a lot easier easier to get a masters than it was before, they've got online programs, things like that. So you get down here, so this three point seven is going to cost at least six percent and two point six. And you do that for all these other groups, too. So this is going to be about five million. So we said here, you know, here's about five million we need, levy, get thirty-three or four million, short about five million. Here, short about five million. And then we lost one point five million of enrollment, and we lost another one point five million or two million of levy equalization. Basically, that's another five million. That's where you get, the levy needs to go up fifteen million. I mean, that's just kind of basic math, but that's kind of what we're talking about.
Vic, can I, can I, real quick, and I want to ask this as as simple as possible. The state for staffing is funding us forty million short than what we are paying for overall staffing?
Well, that's correct, yeah. But, you know, if you look at the certificateed staff, we're really probably, you know, they may say, well, we fund you for nine hundred certificateed staff. But we're probably at nine hundred or below. But we do pay more. The state gives you maybe an average, I think it's like seventy-six thousand.
Seventy-five, four nineteen.
Seventy-five, four nineteen, right? And we're paying probably eighty-six or seven.
Eight, nine, three ninety-seven is our average. And I just want to throw that out there, because I did bring it up. That was one of the gaps that we talked about our, about with our legislators when we met, the the staff mix gap, the salary gap. It's a gap of thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars per certificateed staff member. So if you, if we're paying, we pay people more, just like other districts do, and we have more staff units in some areas than we're funded for.
Yeah, some, but not so much in certificate, but.
But in some other areas.
Just to be clear, we're paying essentially similar to Richland and Pasco.
Oh, yes.
And my point in saying that is, is it's not as though we're lavishing teachers on, you know, I I want to be clear, this is not, you know, we're not saying, hey, our teachers are getting paid way too much.
Exactly.
That's what we're saying is quite the opposite, is we're paying our teachers a fair wage. The state, however, does not seem to feel like our teachers are worth, you know, the, what we, we feel they need to be paid.
And we've talked about it before, the state, you know, some over there would say, or legislative would say, well, you need to go raise your levy a bunch more. But they're part of the problem of why we are unable to raise our levy.
Broken.
And you you noticed how Moody's downgraded us from AA two to AA three. And that's basically because levy didn't pass, enrollment's going down, and and various things. I mean, we've, we've done well to keep the fund balance up, but they do try to look at the future, and that's a big part of the the rating also. So anyway, it gives you a little bit of idea of how things work there, and, you know, and why we need money and and things like that. So we'll talk a little bit about ESAR, and that was brought up here at the meeting. So the ESAR money, you know, we have fifty-eight million, is never going to last. And, you know, we did some mental health. We could have easily flipped that money and not done mental health, and just paid for salaries and increased our fund balance. Because if you're using ESAR to pay for what you're already paying for, you can, you know, increase your money, which we've done a lot of. But, you know, we elected to do some mental health, some tutoring. Way more, we did way more mental health than Richland and Pasco did. They did telehealth. We wanted to get real people in here.
Can you say that again, Vic? Can you say that again for everybody, what you just said?
Yeah, we did, spent way more on mental health than Richland and Pasco.
Like, like, yeah, we recognize that was an issue. I remember being up here like two, a year and a half ago, and I remember beating the drum, like, let's get, these kids are suffering. Let's get counselors in, let's get counselors in, knowing the entire time it was a short-term thing.
Right.
But but at least we had them in for a little while, to try to help out as much as we could, right?
I can tell you, telehealth is way cheaper, I mean, way, way cheaper. But you just don't get that. So and then, you know, we started out with high school therapists. We wanted to move to middle school, you know, we had people come to board meetings. We said, yeah, we're going to work on that. We don't hire the therapists, comprehensive does. So, you know, it was probably about last year this time, we started talking about middle school. You know, they were slow to get, you know, therapists. We, they had started with a couple of middle schools, had a tough time filling some jobs. But, you know, that's, we don't take care of the hiring. We called them a lot, said, hey, how you doing? You know, are you getting this therapist filled? Do what we can from our first side of that. Tutoring's another one, you know, we did it. People might be upset when it goes away.
And just to be clear on that one, that that's going away, too. So Varsity Tutors was a short-term learning recovery, you know, targeted program funded with ESAR. And this year is the last year of Varsity Tutors. And I know we've got families who who are really liking it, and it's really benefiting students, and it was always meant to be a short-term thing. Now, families can continue to access Varsity Tutors and pay for it on their own. We just don't have the money to pay for that. It's a short-term program.
And back to mental health, so we spent probably getting close to a couple of million dollars over the years on it. Part of the idea was, too, to, you know, you get comprehensive or counselors, you set up a referral system, right? It really, that was an opportunity to do that. You know, and when that went away, there'd probably be something kind of set up to where, you know, you still use comprehensive. You know, they have ability to do some things there. And I know we're still trying to work on, you know, working with comprehensive, try to see how that might work in the future without a ton of money.
That's one of the things that, you know, both with comprehensive health and with Varsity Tutors, because I'm sure when parents find out that is going away, people will be frustrated. If we could maybe look at putting together some type of of plan on how we can give the, get the information where if families have an interest in pursuing either of those, they can do it on their own and and have an avenue for them to, you know, a means for for them to sign up and pay for it. I mean, I hate to put it in those terms, but, I mean, for example, the Varsity Tutors, great program. Awesome, amazing program for a lot of kids that might be struggling. But unfortunately, like you said, it's it's a short-term solution and.
So Varsity Tutors actually is a little more on the ball. They are, they they realize it's coming to an end, and they are trying to build relationships with their clients.
With their clients, perfect.
Do some things, you know, outside of the the school district later on. So anyway, working through, you know, just to draw down our ESAR and use it the best we can to to do, you know, help us out financially and provide some services until it ends.
One other thing, on the curriculum, summer school, teacher training, those kind of things, were we just offsetting, like you talked about, were those just cost offsets?
The curriculum actually is tied to math adoption that that had to be done eventually.
Okay, so we just got it done early?
Yeah, most of the offsets down here in the maintain staff, some of the IT, you know, some of those type of things.
The only reason I'm asking is, is other areas that people, that are going to go away that we might, we need to be aware of.
Mainly, those those top two are.
The top two are the biggest things, okay.
Yeah.
And and then obviously, staff sizes or class size is probably going to increase because we're going to have to.
So this is a good tie-in back to this other chart. So you see a million dollars there on mental health. Where would that go in here? You put, plug a million dollars in here, and your deficit would go up by a million dollars. I mean, that's, that's what it boils down to. And like I said, we'll update this chart for for the next meeting. And in this chart, it just has basic ed, local funding. So going back here, it just has this up here, because you really can't do much with this. You know, it's tied by rules and things. So that's what we're looking at, boom. So the ESAR, none of that's on here, because that is all separate money, ESAR money, it's not local-funded, anything like that. If it goes away, you want to do something, you got to add the cost down here. And there's really, yeah, there's no money to do that, but.
And Vic, on those contracts for Varsity Tutors and for Comprehensive Healthcare, was that, it wasn't a fee per use? It was just, we will contract with you for X amount of time of services for this much money, or what?
Comprehensive wasn't a fee for use.
It is.
So if they don't fill the positions, we don't pay them. They don't bill us.
So we were paying for positions. I'm I'm just trying to wrap my head around still some of that out of the box, thinking of how we might be able to continue with these services. And it seems to me that it would be a cheaper option to pay only for that one visit instead of paying for someone's salary. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do. Yeah, so, I mean, back to the contract was, if they didn't have a position, they did not bill us for it. You could have probably done some type of hourly service thing like that. I mean, that was the way the RFP was back when we did it. I think it had various options, but the the ones that did submit, it was pretty much a flat type thing. But but those are, you know, good suggestions.
And Varsity Tutors is the same way?
That one, you buy so many, I don't know, hours or sessions or things like that. And, you know, you know, it's, a lot of these places know ESAR's going away. We are trying to work with Varsity Tutors here in the in the end, and they're not quite as nice to us for some reason. So we're trying to get a lot of data out of them before they close shop, so.
Can I make one more more comment on on this slide? So on the maintain staff lower class size, so so the other thing that we're doing right now, right, is is there's, there's the need to reduce staff positions, because they've been funded through ESAR, and we've got some really low class sizes, so we've kind of been overstaffed in areas, because we've been using ESAR to keep those lower, those class sizes lower. And we've got the boundary change that's being implemented next year. So right now, we're doing quite a bit of work around staffing to see which schools will need to reduce numbers and which schools at the elementary will need to do some adding. And our hope is not to have to do any riffs or reduction in force, that we'll be able to, you know, move, move people, move, and these are our KSD staff members, our own teachers and staff members, right? And be able to move things around so people who have contracts now will continue to have contracts. That's our goal, that's our hope. But we're still working through that that process. And we don't, we don't want to have to do any riffing. But I, you know, we we can't say with a hundred percent certainty tonight that 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 might not happen. And so I'm not saying that to like, say, to be scary or anything like that, but just that, like, these, this is real money and real challenges that we're having to work through, and we're doing our darndest to try to not have to reduce our own KSD staff members.
Yeah, and I can touch on that in another slide a little bit. Back to this maintain staff, so about, you know, five million of this is part of that staff that we're saying probably eventually needs to go away. The other was property. The other was, uh, property levy failure, where we're, you know, using, uh, money from, uh, Esser to backfill for the levy. So, okay, moving on. So we're gonna fill this chart out the next, uh, board meeting. Uh, this is from, you know, the legislature, we'll get their information in here. There's a few spots in here, but basically this is the revenue change. So we want this to go up as much as possible. And it probably will go up by twenty million by the time you get down to the end. We talked about the enrollment, that's gonna be, uh, at least one point one million dollars, you know, to the, to the worst there for us. We're gonna get some more special ed money based on that enrollment there. Uh, transportation funding. So we budgeted, uh, nine point nine million. So this year we're getting ten point eight million. It's just, that formula is always late. It's based on your ridership from last spring, the fall, the winter, and then we get our notice of our funding in February. So we're usually pretty cautious about budgeting that. And, uh, we have been burned before. So usually we just budget the same amount, uh, from the prior year. So we get about nine hundred thousand there. Some other ones here, we just, uh, we'll plug those in as, as we get the state's, uh, ordinance updated. And then the property tax, you can see that would be about ten point seven million. The levy equalization, one point three million, which we would have expected about three point three million, uh, but it's only one point three. So we'll fill these in, it's probably gonna be close to twenty million hopefully by the time it's done. And then, uh, then we'll look at the, the expenditures. So there's costs here going up. So based on what was budgeted and verse, versus what actually happened, whether it's people getting, uh, moving up, moving up on the scale more or we had to hire some staff because, uh, you know, we needed more teachers than we had or whatever it was. It's about one point two million that, uh, of costs there. Had Dr. Pierce talk about these positions. So at the elementary level, we need seventeen vacancies really to, to make it work. If we don't get that by a certain date, then say you only have ten, and you wanna say, well, maybe we can wait in the summer and see what happens. Well, you really can't, so that's when you might have to riff and get those positions. Would you have openings in the summer? People come back and take those? Yes, but you see a lot of districts, uh, particularly on the other side of the state, they'll do a riff and that's how they keep moving their budget along. Then they might have some positions in the summer where people come back and, and take those jobs. So we're working through that and it's been difficult. This is just the first phase. I mean, uh, next year at this time, it's, it's gonna be another two to three million dollars at least. Uh, this is, we're still overstaffed even after this at elementary. It's just we're moving boundaries and it's really difficult to kinda know exactly what that enrollment's gonna be. Uh, we still have schools, as you know, they're gonna be six hundred kids, three hundred and fifty kids. And the next round would be kinda looking at that and, you know, it's not like, uh, the six hundred, uh, student school is gonna get more staff. It's the three hundred and fifty to four hundred is gonna get less. And there's just gonna be a lot more to it and that's even gonna be probably more complicated than, than this is right now.
So, so just to be clear, we're gonna do the same thing again and we're gonna have these kind of reductions again next year?
Yes.
Well, you gotta, yeah, and you gotta think where, right now with Esser funds, I mean, you might go into a kindergarten class with ten kids, right?
Yeah.
Might have to go up to thirteen or fourteen. I mean, that's just.
Yeah, there's still gonna be low class sizes next year and there'll still be.
So we're basically, I'm gonna be blunt, we're trying to hold out as long as we can. And slowly, instead of making dramatic cuts right away, we're just.
Yeah, you couldn't do it right now with the boundaries and the complications and the, the other, uh, kinda, kinda different things are gonna have to be looked at. It's, yeah. So then, uh, middle school, high school, we're looking there around eight. And then, uh, you know, middle school, as you get the elementary kids moving up to middle school, that enrollment's going down. And that'll be looked at again in a year also. High school is a little more stable. We got more enrollment than we expected and, and, um, most of the high schools are supposed to hold the line. There's one, uh, you know, South Ridge enrollment's just not where we like it to be and that, that's one we're working on pretty hard. Uh, and then we'll look at some of these others as we build the budget. Uh, you know, special ed education, the enrollment goes up, you get more money. But, uh, to Josh's point, eventually you gotta hire some more staff to take care of those students. So then we'll have these numbers and we'll be able to figure out from this sixteen million, where are we at? And, uh, it's still gonna be a negative number. We wish it would have been around five million, uh, but it's gonna be probably around, uh, you know, eight or so. We'll try to get it down as best we can. So this is the MSOC, the non-staff cost. We talked about like utilities and liability insurance. You can see those numbers there. So that, that goes back in that chart, it's gonna raise the chart by, you know, by six hundred thousand dollars. Couple of other areas here, most of this, uh, we can hold the line on. IT costs, so this is about two hundred thousand dollars short. If you look at all the contracts we have, uh, probably need to add a couple hundred thousand there. Uh, most of the time we try to keep the budget, um, you know, sort of pretty real and, and so you know what you're dealing with. You know, when the next levy comes, if we take a lot of stuff out and, you know, you really need it, it's really hard to put it back. So, yeah, if you see a deficit of eight billion, you know you need that. What does it take to operate the district? You know, if you cut too much or reduce too much here, then you gotta come back, well, no, we really need it to operate. You kinda lose track of that. So, you know, we'll continue to, next couple of meetings, go over that. So anyway, IT, it needs a couple hundred thousand there. So the curriculum adoption, that was reduced significantly, levy failed. But, uh, looking at what we need and what, uh, renewals are, this needs to go up to about a million dollars. So we have about five hundred thousand dollars every year of just, uh, online renewal type stuff. And then, uh, in the following year, looking at a ELA, K-five, uh, reading type curriculum. So in the past, you know, that, that costs two or three million dollars. Years ago, you know, in better financial situation, we could knock out two or three million dollars. Now, if you wanna do that type of program, uh, we're gonna have to pay, uh, annually. It's gonna probably cost five hundred thousand dollars a year for something like that. So, so this is not enough money and we need five hundred thousand right now to pay for our ongoing costs. If you do the, the curriculum K-five we need, that's gonna be another five hundred thousand dollars a year for five, six years, however long that is.
Wait, explain, is that just because of that's how the payment contract is worked out? Why do we pay five hundred thousand every year?
Because we can't afford.
Well, we can't pay three.
So that's just, that's just the payment.
We try to get a better deal, we'll say, well, we'll pay you all upfront right now.
Sure.
Get your costs down by a whole bunch of money.
Which is what we did in the past, but we won't.
Uh, we've done that in the past, but we're not doing it so much anymore.
Yep.
Yeah, because we just can't. So, um, the other options are we're gonna have to pay annually and, um, work that angle. And to be honest, spending two, three, four million dollars for a curriculum is just probably not gonna happen a lot in the future anymore. I mean, speak to some of that.
I mean, yeah, absolutely. We've done a lot of work, Alyssa and Vic and I, just to get into the detail weeds about what we're spending on, uh, curriculum and what we can do moving forward. You know, we, the, um, math adoption, and you're gonna get that recommendation on, on our new K-five math adoption at the next meeting or the next meeting. Um, and that's what, that's the, you know, thing that we're using Esser funds to pay for. So we wanted to strategically use some Esser funds to pay for things that would, you know, we'd be able to use long-term. And curriculum, of course, is like, one of the number one things, we have to. You know, I mean, that is like our core mission, um, to be teaching kids academics and we need materials to do that. The, the next one, I mean, uh, the, the literacy adoption that's coming up is because the current one is expiring. Like, we're not gonna have access to it anymore. We, we were able to do like a one-year deal, we've got hard copies of things, but there's, all of the curriculum comes with online pieces too. And that curriculum is expiring, so we have to have a new reading curriculum. And that's, you know, the curriculums are just extraordinarily expensive now. It's just, they are. So we're trying to figure out what are the core curriculum areas that we need to have an adopted program? And where can we, um, use like open educational resources or what's called OER? You know, potentially in the future, like, how can, can we curate materials that are available online for free? You know, and that's what some districts are doing and create essentially our own materials, curated materials instead of purchasing materials from textbook companies because the costs are just astronomical. But we have to have updated, good quality materials in the hands of our teachers. I mean, that's a huge priority. Do you wanna add anything, Alyssa or?
Yeah, so anyway, you know, to, you know, you get to high school and stuff, you know, they wanna sell you books, they wanna sell you online. Eventually you gotta figure out, you know, what's it gonna be? You know, uh, it's, uh, so anyway, uh, curriculum, we gotta deal with that. So this is the top part, this is all your basic ed, local funded. Like I said, bottom part, this is all kinda the other money and so Esser money is down, we, this is a budget. The way we budgeted the mental health and tutoring, uh, we budgeted that separately in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Whereas before, it was just a big pot of staff salary type stuff and, and we could move it around. And then, uh, so some other contracts here, uh, the city contract's gonna go up. About, uh, twenty thousand dollars goes up generally almost five percent a year. Uh, that's for the security, uh, police at the high school and middle schools. And then we have a few other contracts, team ready, ready for kindergarten, some of those. And then down here, some things, uh, you know, from some of those other mothers. And, and these mostly are offset with funding. Like I said, uh, if these go, we don't try to lose any money on these, make sure that they pay for themselves and, and work through that. So we'll update this chart as we move along with the budget process. And then the levy equalization. So, yeah, that's, uh, when, when, when this was going on, uh, some of those numbers came in. You know, I talked to OSPI, they're aware of the issue. Wassa is aware of the issue, uh, Dan Steele of Wassa. And, uh, I think we need to keep hitting them on that. I did think there was a legislative bill on levy equalization that did not go anywhere. But, you know, that legislature, if there's anybody over there that knows the issue, you'd want them to start a bill and, and start, you know, working on something. Uh, there's some other people I'll be working with, uh, you know, over the summer to try to get them, uh, make some DA Davidson has worked with us before and they know a lot about school finances and are, uh, pretty averse on this and they could probably try to help push something through. But, uh, it's a complicated formula and that's why, uh, the state went more towards the MSOC and trying to work some of that. But, uh, it's an issue. I know, uh, I've heard a couple of other people say, you know, I was at a presentation and the school district was talking about their problems with the LEA similar to us. So, so it is out there. We just gotta maybe get, uh, some type of legislation, some type of hold harmless and things like that to where districts are protected a little better.
So, so Vic, I don't wanna put you in the spot, but off the top of your head, if we would have been able to collect the LEA that we would have collected had the levy passed, how much more money would we have right now?
We would have a couple million dollars more.
Couple million dollars.
It kinda compounds over the terms, so, yeah. Between that and the enrollment, we'd probably be back to where we had, you know, kinda planned. So anyway, we got, uh, the next, uh, March meeting and April one, we'll, uh, hopefully hone in on some things a little better and take a look at the out years a little bit.
So it's only through the legislature that we can correct this? So moving forward, there's not anyone we can?
I mean, I think we could talk to our local legislators. I mean, one, one, one thing we could try to do is say, you know, if, if, if a school district has a levy failure and had the levy passed, they would have been entitled to this LEA. You know, can there be some kind of protection so you still get your LEA?
Yeah, that's another aspect is we think if the levy fails, the state budgets for that money. And it's not really our fault that it failed. I mean, so that was another thing that I ran to the state, you know, really.
In our case, it passed, it was just that, uh, the, the property tax changed, right? Isn't that what's happening?
But when it failed before, it would have been nice for us to get our fourteen million dollars of LEA that they already had budgeted.
Yeah.
Right?
So there's really two issues. There's that.
Oh, the district, you didn't go try to pass a levy. So, you know, we did try, but we, you know, if you fail it, you don't get your LEA. So that would have been fourteen million dollars that really would have.
The fourteen million.
It made a big difference in, in some of this.
The other part of it, I just think is a little bit harder because, you, you, you know, like I've shared, and, uh, uh, there are districts across the state that don't get LEA because of their property valuation. So, I mean, it's intended for property poor districts to kinda level the playing field across the state. So as the district's assessed valuation increases, I think the state would say, well, you have the capacity in your local community to fund this more instead of relying on the state. You're no longer like sort of a property poor district. So I don't know.
But they don't realize.
The problem with that though is, is when you have a fifty percent increase in one year, there's no way you're gonna accommodate. And that's, that's, I think, part of the problem here is in a single year, we went, our property values doubled.
Well, yeah, the last couple of years, but.
Last couple of years, one of fifty percent.
Right. You've gotta have the assessor and all of that.
You've gotta have some type of protection.
So the problem is two districts pass a three or four year levy, you're locked in. You know, and that is another thing that they should address and realize that, you know.
And I just feel like it's a breach of contract. Like, I just keep wondering, is there something legally, legally that we can do? And I don't know even who we would approach, but because I don't know how much the taxpayers were really paying attention to the circumstances of the levy. But when they passed the levy, they passed it under the terms, the, the existing terms. And then the terms changed because of the assessed value. So I just feel that there's an argument there that we can make that said, we're not getting what we're due because when we passed the levy, these were the circumstances that changed. So I know Bronson's really busy, but I think.
And one thing, and this would be a huge, longer-term thing probably, but I know, like, there are, and I don't know about this city here, but in some jurisdictions, um, the, the taxpayers are approving a rate, not an amount, right? So if the, if, if AV goes up, you collect more because of the rate. Now, in school districts, it doesn't work that way. Voters are approving an amount, so if AV goes up, tax rates go down, we don't collect any more money.
Right.
Yeah.
But if, if they.
Is that a requirement by law that we have to do the amount or, cause, cause to me?
Yeah, you're passing the amount.
But other jurisdictions get to pass a rate, so I don't know why that is.
And we get hosed over and over again.
So anyway, we'll try to keep up to date on that, uh, LEA information and bring back anything that we can. I know Bronson's heard some stuff on it in some of his other districts too. All right.
Thanks Vic. Real, real quick, if, can I just summarize then for my, uh, own thought process? So declining, essentially declining birth rate enrollment, the state not funding us fully for education and bad policies from the state and the federal government are causing operating costs to significantly increase where now we have to go out and try to get more money from other people rather than if they fully.
Yeah, to, to a large extent, uh, yeah. So that's all probably valid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break. We'll be back at seven forty-nine to get to Alyssa's presentation. That'll get it timed to load up, yeah. Take a second.
All right, we're gonna get started here. Alyssa's gonna be presenting on K through twelve academic progress update. Alyssa, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so we're, I'm gonna explain a little bit about what this update is during the presentation, but it goes along with our goal that our students are engaged learners. Um, we have a calendar of reporting that I'm gonna explain where we're looking at different data throughout the year to see the health of our system and that our students are learning. That's our number one goal. We also wanna share some of our strategies that we're using to improve outcomes. We're always asking like, how can we do better? And we wanna share two very intentional, um, strategies that we're using to, um, to improve our outcomes. Um, so I'm gonna share a little bit about our, um, performance indicators and how we report them out, where we're at on some data points, um, here right now in March, and then those strategies to improve, um, learning for our students, cause that, that's why we're here. Um, this goes along with our strategic plan goal that all students are engaged learners. We wanna make sure all of our students are growing, that they're leaving us, um, with growth each year, that we have students, um, hitting grade level standards as well. So these are all different types of performance indicators that we look at. We look at them at grade levels and they vary depending on elementary, middle and high school. We wanna look at different measures, not just one, um, and we've listed some there. And then I just wanna mention to the board, we wanna look at growth, like are students making growth while they're with us? Are they making progress? And then the other one is proficiency, are students meeting the grade level standards and expectations? Typically proficiencies on state assessments or. Typically proficiencies on state assessments or credits towards graduation. I wanted to remind the board that in the fall, we had a study session to update our performance indicators. And that's one reason we don't have previous years on this. So this is, is a sample of the newly for this year approved performance indicators. And really the indicators stayed very similar. What changed was the target before we had like is greater than 65%. And after the board's study session, Dr. Pierce updated those. So we're always increasing each year. We have previous years, but it's, and we can share that. It's just not quite an apples to apples comparison. So.
I, I have a question with this slide.
Oh, yeah.
Because I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly because I find some of this to be very concerning. So for example, we're saying that only 14% of our eighth graders were progressing in their math appropriately. Is that correct?
Fifth and bottom.
Your cursor was almost there. Go up, progressing from level one to two or two.
Sorry, 14%. So one in 10 kids in eighth grade actually is progressing in their math as they should. And if we look as a whole, only one category, the sixth graders in reading are the only people where more than half of the kids are actually where they progressing like they should. And most, in, in a number of these categories, we're looking at roughly a quarter or less. Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes. And part of tonight's presentation is to share what measures we're using to measure these and talking about what those measures are and how it works. Some of these are very, like the formulas are a little tricky because it's meeting standard or that you're growing from one level to the next level.
So, so for example, when I see on the math again, where it says 34, 33 and 23% of students are meeting grade level standards.
Yep, that's based on current, yeah, SBA, this.
So what we're saying is that a third of our students aren't at grade level. Excuse me, only a third, only a third of our students are on grade level. Right. So I'm just taking this out now. If, if 23% of our grade eight are on grade level, so one in four, how are we graduating 80%? Because it means that they're all behind. And, and then somehow we expect that they're all going to. I mean, it goes without saying, you can see what I'm saying. Like they're not on grade level and then somehow.
Based on that one measure, the state assessment.
Okay, yes, based on the state assessment. But I guess my point is that we go through here, this is incredibly concerning to me. We're particularly in math. We are way below where we need. Yeah. I mean, does any?
And that's, and that was one of the questions I think I submitted was just ask, or I don't know if it was a question, maybe an observation that it's difficult to assess the district's success at this point if the target is to increase by 3% each year when we only have data for one year.
It doesn't tell us where we're moving.
And we do have all the previous data and the board in the fall and looking at, because of COVID and everything else, said we really need to start with a new baseline.
Yeah.
For this year and focus on continuous improvement every year. So we have the past data and we can share it with, with you because you guys weren't here at that time, but.
I think I see some new numbers too, like further along. If I remember correctly, there, which might.
But the numbers don't get better. They don't, we're not getting better. I mean, we've got one year of data, which is great. This will help us build, but, but I guess my point is, is I, I see significant concerns, particularly, I mean, reading's not a whole lot better. But, but if you look at the math, I mean, pretty much everybody is, it's a race at the bottom.
You have work to do.
We have that same concern. We are, we want to be transparent as well and we want to talk about what we're doing. Like we, we want those numbers to go up just as badly as the board. So about our reporting calendar, throughout the year, we talk about different data points. And tonight, we're going to spend a little bit of time looking at some kinder data. We're going to look at, I'm going to throw some acronyms out and I will explain them later. We're going to look at some, it's DIBELS and STAR MAP at the elementary level and the middle school level. That's mostly to measure reading and math growth and proficiency. And then we're going to look at credits earned as well. And I will explain the acronyms as we go. So we're going to start right now with our little darlings in kindergarten. In the fall, our students take the assessment called the WA Kids or the Washington Kindergarten Inventory of Developing Skills. And this assesses six different areas of kinder readiness. Cognitive readiness, language literacy, math, physical and social emotional. And so we have the data back from the state of how our students came in ready for kindergarten. It reports of here of the domains, how many were ready in all domains. So 45%, almost 46 of our kindergartners came in ready for kindergarten. Below is where they fell in each of the domains. So that's where they're starting. We do have some historical trends and I'm happy to say that we're moving up with our kinder readiness, which is, we like to see that. I do want to highlight two programs we have to help make sure our students are ready for kindergarten.
Really quick, is there data that shows that, what is, is there, is there data that shows that if they are, have all six category domains, then they have higher scores? What, what is?
It's, it's really just readiness for kindergarten.
But I guess what I'm saying is, is what does that correlate to? So if, if, if you're telling me that we have 45.7% of kids who are doing well in all these domains, ready in each of these domains, should we expect to see higher reading scores, higher math scores?
Yes.
To what degree?
They're able to work with groups, they're able to wait their turns, they can stay in lines, they can be part of the classroom. So they are ready to learn those early literacy skills, those early math skills.
And so it does, I guess what I'd like to know is, what is the correlation? So if I see a 3% increase in the number of domains, we should, what does it correlate in terms of score? Should we see a 3% increase in?
Our principals will say if, when they come ready, they, they meet those kindergarten benchmarks.
Let, let me follow up on giving you some more detail on that.
Okay. Just trying to figure out what the number means.
Yeah. So these were those areas again. And this first column, these are current kindergartners. I want to just highlight, we have a preschool program. ECAP stands for Early Childhood Education Assistance Program. And we have about 240 enrolled of those, some are four year olds, so they won't go to kindergarten yet. 155 of them went to kindergarten. And this is how they scored. Students who go to ECAP usually are lower SES, coming from families of poverty. There might be some other risk factors as well. And it's a great opportunity for families to make sure they are ready for kindergarten. And you can tell that it's making an impact that they're there because they're close to their kindergarten peers. The other one is transitional kindergarten. These students last year started in about January, no, December, I think, where they were at Amistad in a classroom, at Washington. So we had two classrooms for those 24 students and they were on campus, participating, really making sure they were ready for kindergarten in the fall. So we, we are happy to see that those programs are helping make sure our students are ready for kindergarten. So moving up, we have some indicators as well in elementary school. These are in kindergarten, first and second grade. We're really looking at growth. All of our targets around, are around, our kids are growing. They don't start taking state assessments until third grade, but we know we need to be measuring in kindergarten to make sure. These slides have a lot because we're in the middle of an assessment pilot. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. So we did not want schools giving two different assessments. So we said, if you want to be part of the pilot and use STAR, you can. Or historically, we've used MAP. So that's why both are on all of these slides. So of the schools using STAR, in, we are assessing students. You'll notice there were 900 kindergartners who took the early lit. This is early indicators of literacy, phonemic awareness, phonics, letter recognition. They don't move into STAR reading math until they've shown benchmarks. So it's, that's normal to see that number of students in kindergarten for the early lit. Once they get there, they move here. So 51% of our kindergartners are meeting those benchmarks. That's how we would read it.
So is that why the 29% is so, most likely those are kids that might have learning disabilities or, or might come from socioeconomic backgrounds that make it very challenging. So that 181 is kind of a skewed number because it's, it's the remainder of those above.
You got it.
Got it.
Yeah, we want, and that's why we wanted to make sure we put the numbers on these slides to make that connection.
And understanding that the people that met the benchmark are moving over. So they're not going to be included.
Yeah. And it really is only going to impact that early literacy piece with kindergarten first grade because that range of kids is really big. STAR has a math component for kinder, first, second grade as well. And that's where our students were falling for those. For our schools using MAP, there is not a kinder growth assessment, but there is a first grade and second grade. So, and that's where they're falling for those. I'm going to explain this one a little bit. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. So all of those skills, students need to learn how to read. And then you can notice the, these are broken into kindergarten here, that's the K. In the middle's first grade and then over here is second grade. The BOY means beginning of year. And this red would be our students who are receiving intervention or below the benchmark. Yellow's watching and then green is we're on benchmark. So from the beginning of year to that middle of year, we want to see the red go down and the green go up. So for kindergarten, this is trending the right way. We want to see that growth in those literacy skills. This one in second grade is very concerning. Wondering why, why we're going backwards there. The STAR CVM is similar. It's just with that other testing platform. And you can see that similar trend of more green, middle of year. And we would see even more at the end of the year because our students are growing in their early literacy. As students move up to grades through third, fourth and fifth, we're giving the MAP assessment and also the STAR. And the slides are going to show how we're doing on growth and then who is projected to meet grade level benchmark at the end of the year on the assessment. So here's our data on who's growing, who's meeting their growth goals in reading and in math for both MAP and STAR. The difference with this slide is who, who's projected to make benchmark or grade level I'm going to talk about it here and then also in middle school because the, the numbers seem quite a bit different depending on what test is being given. So for MAP, to meet this, you have to have a 55% or higher. That's our district norm for being on grade level. So that this is saying 30 or 50% of our third graders got a 55% or higher on the MAP assessment. So we think they're going to pass the smarter balance assessment. And we have historical data that says that's a pretty accurate indicator. That's why we progress monitor. STAR is very new. It's our first year and we're going with what the company recommends right now. They're saying 40% will get you to pass the state assessment. And we're a little concerned, but we don't have anything to go with. So we're going with that right now and watching it. We may adjust it as a district. 40%, I mean, if you think about like a bell curve, that a 40, 40 to 60 falls in normal, but 40 will not necessarily pass a state assessment. So we're watching that. If you notice, the percentage is just seeing very different from one testing platform to the other. I'm going to talk a little more about it during our assessment pilot.
So really quick, the 38%, 42, 44% in math, those numbers could be worse.
Yeah.
A lot worse?
If they were using the.
If we're using, if, if that number is wrong.
They, they could be. And, and we're watching it closely.
I mean, so if we decided for, as a district, that in order to pass this data assessment, you needed to have a 50% or higher on STAR.
Those would be lower.
These would be lower.
Right now, yes.
We should have the data to.
Yeah. Yeah. And we'll know once after the data assessment, if that correlation is set at a good threshold or not.
And I don't know if this matters, but do Richland and Pasco do the STAR assessment? Like is there a way where we could say, what's your?
Yes.
Kind of look like, give like an idea so we can.
Yes.
Have we done that or not yet?
We do know what a few other districts are doing, but to be, be part of that pilot first year, we just thought, let's just start with this one. We have, but we are watching it and, and very open to adjust.
No, that's what I'm saying. The question is like, what's, is Richland using in Pasco, are they using 40%?
Do they use STAR and do they use 40%? Have you used it for several years?
I think Richland uses I Ready.
So STAR and has, is the first year Pasco's done STAR?
No.
So they may.
So they might know the answer.
They may just be able to tell us even before, yeah, 40% doesn't work or yeah, 40%.
Well, yeah, we have to also remember it's a completely different district.
Yeah, I mean, it's different.
But it'll give us an idea.
We have some people who work with STAR in other districts with us now in Kennewick. And so we, we've had long discussions about this as well.
Okay. I just.
We're going to keep moving. I have a couple of data points with our dual language program just for K5. We have dual K8, but we're going to just share K5 right now because all of our dual schools are using STAR. So we've collected data in STAR in English and Spanish because we want to see how our students are growing in both languages. So it's important that we keep a high level of Spanish all the way through so we can work on having balanced bilinguals. That is one of our goals of the dual language program. It's really common for Spanish reading to start out really high because learning Spanish right at first is super easy. It's very syllabic. It's a much easier language to pick up than English. So we see a lot of success right at the beginning in our early Spanish literacy. And then we want to continue to keep growing. We want to see these numbers stay consistent and grow, not dip down where we see the English is growing. But these kids are learning two languages and that's a lot of growth if you add it all together. We, once we have a couple of years of STAR data, we will make some trajectories of biliteracy. We had it with our previous data DRA, but with this one, we've got to wait a little while to get that. Middle school has the same growth and proficiency targets using MAP and STAR. And that's what you can see here. It's a little bit more balanced pilot though, because we have two schools using STAR and we've got them down here. We have three schools using MAP. So this first one is that growth that our students are learning. And for some reason, we always take a little dip in sixth grade. There's always a big change from fifth to sixth in growth. And then typically we start seeing that it go in the right direction, seventh and eighth grade. And then here's the proficiency. And this one with those norms we were talking about are a lot higher with STAR. So we're, we're just really being cautious. And these percentages are quite a bit higher than what we saw on that page, on like page three. So we'll, we'll see if this holds or if we need to adjust it.
Yeah. And this is still set at that 40% threshold?
It's the same, yes, even for the middle school.
So why would the same assessment trend so differently? So, why would the same assessment trend so differently? Is it just, is just part of the internal validity of the test itself? It's not as strong or weaker? Okay, it's okay.
It's a very popular, yeah, it's a very popular assessment platform. Um, and I'm going to talk about that as well. We are kind of noodling on the same thing right now.
Our four, seven, MCP, well, MCP and Park, socioeconomically, are they close to Desert Hills, Chinook and Highlands?
Desert Hills?
Uh, not Highlands.
Shunook?
The, no, Highlands, yes.
Highlands is probably more like
Highlands and Park are a little more similar.
I, I guess Highlands and, but Desert Hills is
Highlands is like Park, it goes up and hills.
I guess my question is, is because Desert Hills and Chinook and Highlands, are they higher socioeconomic?
So, I would say Chinook is higher.
Desert Hills and then
Chinook and Desert Hills are higher.
I guess my point is, is we look, they're doing the MAP testing. If they're a little bit higher than the other ones, you would think that their percentages typically would be a little bit higher. We're seeing the STAR testing is quite the opposite.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that.
I guess my point would be is, is I'm fairly confident seeing this that the STAR testing information is not correct. We're not going to be even close to sixty percent. We're probably going to be below
Yeah.
Probably in the low thirties at the best.
But do I ask in Pasco?
In math, in math, I'm sorry, in math, I'm looking at math.
Yeah.
I mean, just, just guessing? But if you're looking at a slightly lower socioeconomic, take off five percent?
We can work on that and run some different projections to see.
And after this year, we'll have much better
We will, yeah, we will. And I'll talk about that pilot in a minute. Okay, the, I want to talk a little bit about our high school and the indicators we use. I wanted to take a moment. Are we okay?
We're, we're just, we're just commenting on how much work we're giving you. I'm feeling bad about it, that's all. And now, every
Well, I want to assure you that I had the same goal is I, I want to see our students learning. So, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the attentiveness and the level of, um, seriousness this needs. So, we will work together to make this better.
And, and don't miss, yeah, hopefully, it's not getting misconstrued. I'm not trying to be a negative Nellie over here. It's just, but, but I guess my, my point is, is that this is an area of significant concern.
Absolutely.
Because, because it all flows downstream. If they're going, you know, if, if by sixth grade, we've only got thirty or forty percent of kids that are going to be proficient at math, then going to the math program that we talked about, they're not going to get that algebra.
Right.
Definitely not going to get algebra at high school or junior high, which is what we wanted.
Right.
And then
It all fits together.
If they don't have the framework, they will struggle. And, and sure, we can give them a piece of paper that says they graduated, but if they don't have the fundamental knowledge they need, which is gra, which graduation is supposed to signify, they're going to struggle in their jobs. They're going to struggle in, down the road. And so, we're trying to get these kids ready. That's, that's, and I think we're all on the same page.
We are.
That's, we're just, we're not trying to be negative. We're just trying to say, okay, what can we do to
Yep.
push.
You're trying to be negative, but we're not.
Okay, we're going to talk a little bit about high school, and then I'm going to go into some things we're trying to do to work on our, um, academic achievement. I wanted to take a minute before we talk about the high schools, just to take a moment and say, these are all our high school kids. Um, these are all academic programs that are in the Kennewick School District. A few of them are, um, GED prep programs. Um, but all of these are programs in Kennewick. And these are all our students.
Really quick, I've never heard of day reporting. What, what is day reporting?
Yeah.
Um, so, sometimes, uh, students who aren't going to school, um, but they, like in a comprehensive high school, will report and get tutoring. Um, it could be they can't go to school, but they still are, have a right to an education.
Yeah, it's a, it's a program over at JJC. So, it's on the campus of JJC, although it's not connected.
No.
It's not for kids who are incarcerated or anything like that. And it's, um, it, it's a program that where they're working on, my understanding of it is that they're working on GEDs um, in day reporting. And why it's called day reporting, I don't know.
The other question I had, and I'm just seeing a single data here, but Kennewick between eleventh and twelfth grade loses fifteen percent of its, its, its enrollment? Is that a typical trend in Kennewick or is that a single year?
Can you tell me?
Eleventh grade is four fifty-one, twelve is three eighty-five.
That's like this year's eleventh graders and this year's twelve.
Kennewick High School, yeah, Kennewick High School. It, it, it goes from four fifty-one to three eighty-five. We're losing seventy-five kids, which is about fifteen percent.
I don't know where that class have started though.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking. Is this, is this a general trend that we typically see where we're going to? Because going to the enrollment problem we were talking about earlier, I mean, that's seventy-five kids right there. We've, we've got a hundred kids almost that we can, if we could somehow find out what's going on there.
One thing I don't know from this chart, um, is it head count or FTE? Do you know off the top of your head?
I think it's head count.
Because, because I mean, is it?
Yeah, so I don't know if that's like running start or
And that's why I'm just asking like
Yeah, yeah.
Because going back to the enrollment issues,
Yeah.
you know, we can see from ninth grade to twelfth grade, all of the high school are declining, but
You can see TRIT. IB should be in there because Kennewick has an IB program. They should be in there, but TRIT, great.
And I, as, you know, again, just going back to the other problems we're dealing with, if we could see if that's a general trend that we're losing a ton between junior and senior year or if it's just a one-year anomaly?
And it might just be that that class is
Yeah, right, exactly. Is it a one-year anomaly that just that class was a smaller starting class?
CBC, CBC's got twenty-four of those kids. I mean, they go other places.
So, the twenty-five is
We don't know.
The other thing that this doesn't share, it, it doesn't speak to your point, Dr. Miller, but our students who are here beyond twelfth grade, who are here for an additional year
Yeah.
usually are in that twelfth grade column as well.
So, so to that point, the numbers may actually be worse.
For the Kennewick, high example, yes, but that could be, um, the CBC diploma kids. These could be a lot of
Fifth year seniors?
Yes.
Okay, that.
Um, so, with our high school students, we want to look at who's on track to graduate. And, and so, we are looking at credits towards graduation. At this time in ninth grade, if you would be on track, if you have three credits at the end of first semester. Um, so, we do have last year's percentages here, and then we have this year's, um, percentages as well. You can see in ninth grade, we have a dip down. In tenth grade, we're trending up a little. Eleventh grade, about the same, a little bit higher. And in twelfth grade, we're up a little bit more to be on track for graduation.
What I want to say on this one
Yeah.
is I don't think this means that only, you know, sixty-eight percent of our kids are going to graduate. So, this is like a point in time and there's still, there's, there's requirements in credit areas, right? With the twenty-four credit, but then there's, there's, there's waivers.
Most of them will be going away next year.
There's, well, there's some of them that are kind of baked in.
Okay.
Um, not, so not COVID waivers, but, um, basically, you know, there's, there's opportunities for kids to still graduate with seven, if they've met the seventeen foundational credits. So, I just don't know that we can say, oh, my gosh, right, sky's falling. We're only going to have like seventy percent of our kids graduate based on this data. So, I just want to put that out there.
Do they have past data on this or no more? Is this the first time we've collected?
No, we, we've got it.
So, we can look and see, because one of the things I'd, I'd be interested to see is what's that?
I want to say then, why?
Well, the, the benefit here would be is, is you can identify the trend
The cohort.
of, of where they start to fall off. Because if you can see that, for example, if you see that your, your eleventh grade data predicts, can predict your, our trends with your graduation data, then what it tells us is, is we need to focus on making sure our eleventh grade, eleventh grade, coming into eleventh grade, that they are really honed in and prepared in meeting their fifteen plus. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, it'll help us know where we can
Yeah. The state actually identifies one of those indicators as ninth grade on track. Our, we want our students in ninth grade starting on track and staying on track. Typically, a lot of your Fs are in ninth grade. It's an adjustment to high school. Um, the grading counts for credits where in middle school, most of the classes don't. So, there's just like that reality check. And it is an indicator that we, we report to the state. It's called ninth grade on track. This is a concerning dip in ninth grade. Um, and it makes me wonder who's coming in with credits already. Um, has that gone down because of those middle school credits? Um, attendance is a huge challenge. Um, it is hard to compare this to previous years because we're still coming out of inconsistent data with COVID. Um, but attendance, if kids are here, they're passing classes. Um, looking at last year's grades to this year's grades, there were about, um, seven hundred less As and about, um, over a thousand more Fs. So, it, it, it's going the wrong way.
Yeah, it's so interesting.
And we're very concerned, very concerned. Yeah, no, and we're still feeling it. Yeah. Um, so, this one's just, um, this first semester of students passing their classes. So, it's a little bit laser more focused from the previous slide, um, showing students who passed classes, all of their classes. So, got it, everything but an F for ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade. And we've got last year and this year there.
So, I mean, did we change anything? What, what, what's different? Is there something different that we're, we're doing something differently from last year to this year?
Well, we are trying some things. We're not seeing the benefits of it yet. I'm going to talk about the two main ones in a minute. Um, attendance is a real challenge. Um, we have students missing a lot more school than we used to.
Well, you might even see these numbers stay the same or even potentially decrease a little. Is that, is those younger kids who were forced out of school for two years?
These ninth graders?
Remote learning, as they come through?
Ninth graders were six and
They were sixth graders. They never had a normal middle school experience. So, all of that training in middle school was very irregular for these current ninth graders.
So, attendance, going to your issue, attendance, these are kids who in sixth and seventh grade
It would have been for twenty-two, twenty-three as well. I mean, you know, last year's ninth graders were halfway through sixth grade when everything went through. So, they didn't have a typical middle school experience either.
Right.
But there's something with this group.
And we'll see if the trend continues. Because certainly, when you're talking about fifteen hundred people at a five percent drop, that's actually fairly, six percent drop. That's a fairly significant number.
Yes. Am I understanding correctly that if I'm looking at last year's ninth graders, seventy-four percent of them passed all their classes, but they would be this year's tenth graders, right? So, we've had a four percent drop with that same group of kids.
With that group, yes.
The other thing I'm wondering now is, uh, so this is first semester, okay?
Just first semester.
Yep.
Yeah, and the principals are looking at this. This is very high level. It, that causes a lot of questions. Um, our, our principals are looking at just their kids. They're looking at this by grade level, by demographic, by content areas, and they're trying to get down to see where is it? What can we do?
Our twelfth graders did better.
So, I do want to spend a little time on two pretty big, um, strategies we as a district are using to work on these outcomes. And they're going to take a couple of years. Um, but I want to explain what they are. Um, so, the first one is professional learning communities. And we, we have a goal in our strategic plan that our staff are high-functioning collaborative teams who use data to plan, improve, and innovate. Um, and to do that, we're offering quite a bit of intentional training around professional learning communities. Um, I think in the fall, Dr. Pearson, one of her updates talked about professional learning communities. Um, and also mentioned some of the research of John Hattie, which is called Visible Learning Research. John Hattie is a researcher who has researched tons of different research, like had done a meta-analysis. And in his research, the biggest effect size on student learning, these are all the different things that he has, um, researched. And the biggest effect size is collective teacher efficacy, student expectations, responding to intervention, and formative teacher, um, evaluation. Really, it's those top two so that we believe in our kids, we set goals, and we help them, uh, get towards them. In professional learning communities, it's a shift to not what the teacher is doing, but what is the student learning and how are we adjusting? This, uh, this is the training that we're helping, uh, teachers with, with principals with so we can have those high-functioning teams, um, that are collaborating. They're using student data. They're adjusting how, um, how, what they're doing in class so students can learn. And we have some early success stories of it, um, working at all levels. I have a, um, here's kind of the four big questions of a PLC. What do we want students to learn? And so, that means we know our standards for the grade level. We're focusing on those priority standards as well. If we taught all the standards, our kids would be with us till they're twenty-one. We have to narrow it down into those really important ones and that we have a scope and sequence, um, that we're using to teach. How are we going to know our kids are learning it? Okay, we have an assessment system. This is classroom assessment. This is MAP. This is STAR. But it's that we're responding to the assessment. If it's only smarter balanced, we can't get to it quick enough. Um, so, these are assessments in three, six, nine weeks so we can adjust our instruction with our students. This, these essential questions work for all grade levels. Um, what are we going to do when students don't get it? How are we going to intervene? How are we going to reteach? And then also, question number four, if they've got it, how are we going to do enrichment activities and extensions? So, those four essential questions done in a collaborative way is where we can see a lot of growth.
Alyssa, on that first question, what is it we expect students to learn? I've, as I've been touring the schools, I've seen some PLCs in action.
Great.
And I've gone into classrooms where they've had their scope and sequence and their defined learning standards, you know, visible. So, if I'm in a second grade classroom, I walk in and I see what the PLC has identified as the essential learning standards. Do the third grade teachers weigh in on that at all? Because they have an understanding of where these students need to be going.
That's the next step is vertically aligning. And we have two elementaries that are there working on those pieces to make sure those gaps aren't there. Um, our schools are in different spots of this work, and the district's working to make some guides as well to help schools know where they need to be so we can have a guaranteed and viable curriculum across the entire district.
And the state standards that we use to do our local kind of refinement work are all articulated from K to twelve.
See, and that's what I thought was happening was I thought they were taking the state standards and saying, we can't teach all of these.
They cannot.
Or, but all of these aren't the same.
Right.
Like, you're not going to spend the same amount of time teaching this standard as this standard. They're not all created equal.
Yeah. Okay, so the other grades, the grades above are weighing in and saying
And everybody's using their grade level, working from their grade level standards. So, it's not like they're coming up with their own
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure that they're identifying the, the standards that are most helpful for growth and progress and proficiency in the coming grade.
Yes, we've got to begin with the end in mind. What, what happens sometimes, this is, um, kind of a vague example, but sometimes teachers have that love unit, like they really love ladybugs. But we don't know the standards that are being taught through that ladybug, um, unit.[1718.61] So we've got to work with teachers and in those teams and grade levels to make sure those grade level standards are being taught. So when they're being assessed, the kids know what is being asked of them. So here are some examples of how this looks. We surveyed our staff in our assessment pilot about using data in PLCs. And we had probably 300 responses from our teachers. But overall, in talking with principals and teachers who are on committees, they are looking at data more than they have in the past few years. So that's a step in the right direction. This is an example of a standards map for dual language. Blue is in English, green is in Spanish, because you don't teach a standard twice in dual language. The content can be in English or Spanish. So they have to have a very specialized map to hit the standards and divide them between the languages. Another example, Southridge has all of their courses, their teams have created norms, they've got their common units here that they're working on, they've agreed to essential standards here, and they've got a hub where that's living. In elementary school, our technology teachers have outlined by grade levels what skills and technology our students need. I just snipped the basic operations, and then they have a code for if they're introducing it, reinforcing it, or if it's a mastery based on the grade level. Just some quick examples of what a PLC looks like in action. Our assessment pilot really couples nicely with that because we can't wait until smarter balance to know how we're doing. We've got to be able to look at things as we're going throughout the year. So to make sure we're on track for smarter balance, we're using different things to progress monitor. In the past, there's been some concerns that we are not getting quick enough feedback with the MAP assessment. And the STAR has been a little bit quicker to administer and to respond to. The reports are easier for teachers to utilize. So we wanted to start a pilot last year to look at STAR as one of those progress monitoring programs in the district. So this year, we let schools opt in if they wanted to pilot STAR. The study that we had, we really wanted to look and see, and we've talked a little bit tonight about that growth and proficiency between the different tests. We want to see that it helps us improve our state assessments. We also want to make sure our students aren't taking tests all the time and how much time students are taking tests. And then just making sure we're getting a return on our investment. We had a lot of elementary schools that wanted to pilot STAR. So if they wanted to, we let them opt in. And then we had a couple of middle schools as well. Just quickly, surveying and looking at time, here's the graph to support it. But really, STAR is taking 30 to 60 minutes less than MAP is what we're finding. With some of the early literacy, we still don't, for STAR CBM, it is taking a long time. It's about the same right now as when we were doing DIBELS. Because you have to, a lot of it's individual with the student. And reading again, where the STAR is not taking as long of an assessment for the students. It's not as long as a test. We asked our teachers if they're using the assessments to really help plan in their PLCs. With STAR, 69% are, with MAP, 54% are. So a little, a slight increase on using that data there. But the anecdotal feedback is really helpful, some of the advantages of STAR. Really, what I've seen is the reports are easy for a teacher and principal, so they're actually using them and adjusting groups, adjusting instruction, and not as much time on tests. With MAP, we're seeing, we just have a lot of data in 20-plus years. So it's, that makes us nervous as well. But we do have some concerns about how long it takes. We also, MAP has changed some customer service, and we're not getting some PD support like we have in the past as well. So we're, that's kind of our mid-year check on the assessment pilot. I would say we're cautiously optimistic that we're using data more than we have. And that should translate to better, better learning outcomes. We had some questions. I feel I hit some of them during the presentation. Are there any other questions?
These were my questions, and I think you've already answered all of them.
Okay.
But my biggest question is that final one. Just, we have these proposed solutions, the PLC and the assessments. I guess the assessment is a little redundant, but does the, what I want to know, one of the, a couple of principals I've gone into have sat down with me, have pulled up their, out their STAR data. One had it broken down to the grade level and to the teacher. And had information about, you know, this particular teacher is not making growth. I've got to get in that classroom and find out. That is really, really valuable data. So I'm curious to know if the interventions that we're making, and I know we're brand new with STAR, but are the interventions we're making backed by the data? Is the data indicating that it is the work that needs to happen in PLCs that's really the problem? I'm not asking this very eloquently, but I just want to know what's going on.
Well, and we want to make sure we're, like, we want a different result, so we need to do something different.
Sure.
Right? And we want to make sure we do the right thing too. So...
And I think there's different, there's different layers of strategy too. So what I would say is I think we know, and research would support, if, so think about it this way. If you have to take a, if you're given a driving test and it's assessing whether or not you're fit to be driving on the road, you want to make sure that the course you're taking is aligned to what's being assessed on that driving test and that the course you're taking is teaching those standards. And so we know that if I, if I'm your instructor responsible for teaching you the driving course standards, and I'm not teaching you those standards, you're not going to do well on that assessment. So we know, and there's tons of research to support the fact that teacher clarity around standards is critical. And that then you have to have a way of monitoring along the way. I don't want to just teach you and hope that when test time comes, and I'm not saying we're teaching to the test, I don't mean that. It's about teaching the standards. But when the assessment comes, if I haven't, if I haven't monitored along the way, I'm just kind of crossing my fingers that my teaching was effective and that you learned what I think I taught you. So I have got, so we know that we've got to assess frequently. And to see, are you learning? Are you making progress? And if Gabe is, but Micah isn't, what do I need to do differently to help Micah? So we know that that assessment piece, and you have to have frequent assessments that teachers can understand and act upon. And then we also, you know, so yes, PLCs absolutely. And if what you're describing is true, there's data to show that if now I'm changing and we're all teachers and I'm getting really great results with my kids, but you're not. Okay, what is that? Is that because you have more kids that came in lower in your classes and you've got farther to take them than I do? Is it that the pedagogy that you're using? Is it that you're not teaching the standards? And that's where the whole TPEP, or Teacher Principal Evaluation System, comes into play. And where the principal is the supervisor of instruction is critical to know what's going on in classrooms and where do they need to intervene and support to help the teacher who's struggling. Maybe they're a new teacher and they don't have the same sort of toolkit, right? That a more experienced teacher does. Maybe they're not really understanding how to look at the data. So it's not that this is like the only thing.
Right.
But there's a lot of other parts of our system that complement...
And the PLCs at least give you a place to have those discussions and to break down the data and figure out what the differences are from teacher to teacher or from student to student, program to program.
Or what did I do that worked that can help my neighbor teacher?
And I think it's really important that none of this is about a gotcha.
Nope.
For principals or teachers or for kids. It's about really being super intentional about our kids' learning and how are the adults in the system learning from one another? Because if we're on the same grade level team and you're getting really good results, like I want to know what are you doing? Or is it that you've got a different profile of students? And so do we need to think about scheduling differently? Or, you know, how, it's all of that. It's not about like a gotcha. It's about providing the right supports to the adults and the kids in the system so we can get better outcomes.
So it sounds like the STAR is, it seems to be better aligned, right? With this, with these...
It's giving teachers data.
Yeah, because they can access data right away.
And that's one piece that they look at. They're also looking at end of year chapter tests, or they're looking at a paragraph the students wrote.
Yeah.
But I would say the teachers are using STAR to help inform instruction more than MAP was being used. And that's the step in the right direction.
That's a huge positive.
Huge.
It's just knowing that, that little percentage. Because that's why I think like maybe talking to Pascal, like say, hey, what do you guys use? What are you guys seeing? Where's your, how's your, how's it came out the last few years? I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
With this, we were talking a lot about the teacher side of things. And I think, I think the PLC sounds great. But one of my concerns here, especially as I kind of dig into data a little bit, look at things, is concern about mastery. At the end of the day, the kids need to have mastery of these topics. And particularly as you look from grade to grade to grade. I mean, going back to that first slide, what's particularly concerning is for the most part, with only a couple of exceptions, you're seeing a slide from sixth to eighth grade. And the problem is, is if you don't master skills at the lower levels, you're, it becomes very difficult to catch up. And so it compounds, kind of like when we were talking about the budget with Vic. It compounds itself. And so as we talk about using this data, one of the things I think we need to reinforce and maybe find some way, this is not my area of expertise, but really find a way to focus on student mastery of issues or of topics. Because if they don't master the, master the topic, particularly in math, and that's the thing about math, the beauty of math is math is, math is right or wrong. I mean, it's, it is two plus two is four. And there's no, there's no debate. And you can't talk your way in and out of it being three or five. It's always going to be four. So if they learn the principles, those principles can be used to grow. But if you don't learn the principles, by the time you get to eighth grade, you're not going to understand algebra. And you're never going to get to precal because you just don't have the skills.
The other thing I always go back to is that's why multiple measures are really important too. Because on that first...
Yeah.
That's, if you're looking at state assessment, that's, you have to triangulate data, right? So I kind of think about it as a, like a portfolio on the student. If I'm a teacher, I'm, there's the state assessment data. But it could be that Gabe does really well on the tests that I give and the things that I do in the classroom. And I can see that he's mastering the concepts and skills. But when it comes to taking the state assessment, he either doesn't care about the state assessment or he struggles with that format of test, or there's computer, it's on a computer, and there's barriers. So it's like, it's, I'm not saying we throw it out, but we just have to triangulate it with other pieces of data too. And so that tells part of a story, but maybe not the whole story.
Well, I just use that one. But I mean, even the STAR testing, the MAP testing, we see, we're seeing the same numbers over and over again. Core numbers, 30s, 40s percents.
Yeah. And all of these are like a, you know, it's, like I think about, so I was an English Language Arts teacher. And I mean, there's one skill of taking an online test, multiple choice and doing things. And then actually like the skill of writing and actually producing a piece of writing. And a kid might be really good at this, the writing, but not so good at the multiple choice test taking. So I'm not, I'm just saying that that's where grades and, we have to look at grades and like, that's why we have student conferences. So there, we're kind of looking at a whole body of evidence around, is a student mastering what they're supposed to master in third grade? Based on STAR, based on SBA, and based on all the things that a classroom teacher does with that kid every day.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanted to ask, and part of it is because you brought it up, maybe unintentionally, is here we're talking a lot about the academic assessment or core card. But I think that ties hand in hand, as you mentioned, is some of the acad, or some of the attendance and discipline issues that might be going on. And I, I'd love to see a, an amalgamation of those two because it'd help us better, I mean, we could be having these professional learning groups who could be doing all of this. But if it's not, if the kids aren't sitting in the classroom.
Yeah.
It's, it's all, it's all for nothing.
And that's, that in the category of student expectations, right? You said that in your, I don't remember the name of the gentleman who did the research, but...
Hardy.
That, Hardy, you know, collective teacher efficacy. And then the second one is student expectation. And so that's what you're talking about.
So do you know, I mean, are we doing things to improve attendance right now?
Uh, yes, and...
That's a whole different topic. We can, if it's all...
You're going to get a report on that too. But I think what you're pointing out is all these reports aren't just siloized, episodic. They all tie together, right? And so you are going to get one on attendance and discipline and all of those kind of things.
And I guess when you do that, if you could correlate that, if we could, when you provide that, if you could correlate it perhaps with, with grades and outcomes. Because that would be really helpful, if we could see trends. Because then again, going back to discipline that's been brought up before, going, as we're trying to figure out the numbers, better data gives better decisions. But it allows us to tell us where we need to put our focus. And that's, you know, that's why I'm saying, looking at trends, is saying where, where do the trends happen so that we can put our focus there? We only have limited resources.
Yep. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Awesome. We'll tell Matt, because Matt does that report.
But I'll be back in the spring. We're, I mean, we're two thirds through the school year, but I'll be back with some more data and how we're doing at the end of the year.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Our next business meeting agenda is 2024-25 prelim budget, transportation, annual bus purchase, asset preservation, capital projects update, and the K through five math adoption recommendation. Any, if you have anything to add, please let me know and we...
I would, I would like to, I mean, I don't need to add this to this agenda, but I think I'd love some more guidance or some more discussion on the feasibility of having a committee or a group or someone look into the mental health counselors a little more. And whether that's us or staff or a separate committee, but just to look at what our options are.
Yeah, yeah. So let's do a little more on the, on the budget and move back on that.
Okay.
So we've also glossed over our second step. It's still a lot of others. We need to deal with that at some point. It does need to be next meeting, but we need, before the end of the school year, we need to make a decision on that and come to a...
And we do have that on, scheduled in. So Gabe and I spoke a couple of weeks ago and scheduled some things in that were still hanging out there. I don't remember off the top of my head which meeting it's on, but I think it's coming up in March. So we do have it scheduled.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think it's on the, after that. Okay, and then also I'd like to share that we will be having public meetings for our initial interviews for the Deputy Successor Superintendent. That will be the 20th and the 21st. So those will be open here at the building. So that'll be between now and our next business meeting. We will be moving to executive session for our Deputy Successor Superintendent Application Evaluation for the next 30 minutes. We have no other business as authorized by law. So when we're done there, I will come and adjourn the meeting. But note, there will be no further formal action taken right now.